It goes up fast.
I have four thirty-one at this time. We will call the median Canyon State Commission. With that, Commissioner Ray.
Father, we come before you. First of all, we want to ask for your comfort and for your strengths with Gretchen and her family with what they're dealing with today. Father, we just ask for your hand on that. Father, we also ask for your continued hand protecting the people of Canyon, Texas and our staff and our first response. Father, we thank you for them and thank you for their hard work and again we ask for your protection. Father, we thank you for a beautiful day and today as we make decisions, we just pray for wisdom. We ask these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Please write hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That takes us to the approval of the minutes of the meeting of January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Changes on move, we approve. I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes is written. On favor, signify by raising your right hand. Pose like sign. Motion passes. All right. Item number five, public comment, comments from interested citizens. It looks like we have several have signed in, but all on item number fifteen, I think. So I think we will wait and address that at that item. And I'm going to, I think it's my prerogative to move that up on the agenda to where we can go ahead and do that since we've got folks here. So we'll go ahead. Next order of business. Since we have no other public comment, we will go to item number fifteen. To conduct a public hearing and consider and take appropriate action on the final draft subdivision regulations. Lucas, a huge project for you here, so.
I thought I had until number fifteen, so I was gonna. Give me a second, let me pull up the agenda here.
Sorry, I spring that on you.
No, it's all good. Scroll down here. Is that the page?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, thank you. I'll let y'all scroll there too if you need to. Page two ninety-nine, John said. Small packet this week. Y'all there?
Physically and mentally, yes.
Yes, okay, good. So yeah, I'll read the memo first and then I got comments and things to say in addition. But as you all know, Freezing Nichols has been working with us for four years and a couple of months now on the subdivision regulations in partnership with City of Canyon and our staff here. This is the first update since the previous regulations were adopted and I did find the date in nineteen seventy. So well overdue. We did public stakeholder meetings. Last year they occurred in March and December for initial comments and review of the first draft. Last month, we had a final document that was submitted to the commission for consideration and a public hearing. There were a lot of stakeholders here that spoke up about needing more time. They wanted to review it more. We needed to do a better job of getting back our comments out to that group, so we did that that week. And we gave two more weeks of comment period after that last meeting. So all those comments were submitted and received. We had one person submit comments after the last meeting. And we worked as a staff to reply to all of those comments and get those back last Monday. And so that was the process up until this point. I will add that we had extra conversations this afternoon. And so I provided John with a list of some more changes. I don't know if he handed those out yet, but yeah, I've got that there. So add, give that to you all. The two options that we had here for action recommended by the staff was to adopt as written or to adopt subject to prescribed changes. And so I wanted to provide, these are some prescribed changes based off of conversations we had this afternoon, myself and Dustin Davis. He's an engineer for a lot of the development community here in Canyon and the ETJ. So we worked together to put this together and I just wanted to kind of talk through those prescribed changes based on the conversations we had in response to our responses sent last week. The first change that we're adding is just changing the word submission to approval. What this does is allows developers to submit construction plans prior to having off-site easements approved. So what that does is allow them to get preliminary approval from the City of Canyon before they go out and purchase off-site easements so that they know, at least preliminary, preliminarily understand that the development they're proposing can work, so.
Can you translate the question number to a subdivision regulation number at all?
I can do that.
That's complicated, I know.
Yeah.
You're from the Ivy League, though.
So question seven, if you're looking at the subdivision regulations, will be found on, excuse me.
Page eight.
Page eight. Page eight. Eight.
Eight.
Yeah. So on page eight. The word submission has been changed to approval. And so as I said, what that will allow, and it's page eight, letter C, number two, last sentence there. So what that does is allow developers to have a preliminary approval of construction plans before they have to go out and acquire off-site easements. So that was the first change we made. The second change we made was adding language to, right below that actually, the sentence that's number three, saying the off-site easement should be conveyed and recorded at the county by an instrument approved by the city. We added language to clarify that those are off-site easements that contain public drainage or public utilities. So any public infrastructure or water or drainage that leaves the site and needs an off-site easement, we want to make sure we have record of that at the city so that if ten years, fifteen years down the line, somebody comes and says, "Hey, I have this drainage coming through my property. It looks like it's draining City of Canyon subdivision." We have a document that shows, oh yes, we have that recorded. That was, that's an easement that exists with previous landowner. You know, we don't expect that to happen often because when people buy property, they always know everything about it. Sorry, that's supposed to be a joke. So.
We're trying to get there.
Yeah, yeah, that's all right. So it's basically just something that we can have on record so that if somebody buys a property that has an easement associated with the development that contains any kind of public water or drainage, we have that. In this case, it just needed to be clarified.
That has occurred.
Right, exactly. So, and we, and that's already practice. We're just putting it in writing. Hunter's Two is a good example. It's a development in the ETJ. They have an off-site drainage channel, or easement, excuse me. And so we have a record of that just so we can make sure that anyone that comes and asks why that water is crossing the road, we can show this, this is an agreement between these two parties. The other two changes we made here, fifty-two and fifty-three, those are on page.
Sixty.
Sixty. Actually fifty-five of the manual here.
Oh, yes.
Page fifty-five, letter E on page fifty-five and F, number two. These two were based on some increasing policies that we're hoping to work towards as a city and drainage and as we deal with drainage. But right now, we don't have an updated criteria manual. So Dustin made the good point that there's not really something he can look for that allows him to show what we're requiring here. So we thought that was a good point. We're removing two sentences there. And that just makes it in line with our current criteria manual. In the future, if the city decides to update the stormwater criteria manual, then that's something we can consider at that point. The last change that we made based on conversations today would be number fifty-six, and that is on page fifty-six. Letter O, number seven, is requiring a site grading plan. We're removing that requirement from the ETJ because we don't regulate finished floor elevations or anything like that. So that was another thing that Dustin pointed out to us, that we wanted to make sure we updated and edited that. So those are the changes prescribed based on our conversations. Everything else that's in the document, we're recommending be approved with the document. I'd love to take any questions or comments from any commissioners at this time before we do public comment.
You know, Lucas, I think not everybody's gonna come to into agreement in this room on what needs to be done. But you know, I do appreciate in the process that, and I appreciate Dustin too stepping up and you know, had a list here earlier of fifty-nine items to address, you know. Not all those went, but you know, there are numerous changes in that. But two things, I appreciate that detailed look and list. And then I appreciate the response that you all gave and the timely response and today too. So I appreciate the, you know, the work that's going together and working together on it in depth and all too, so.
Thank you.
And Dustin, here's the only individual that's provided anything in writing with questions or concerns or comments associated with this.
That is correct.
Is that correct? Appreciate that, Dustin. Thank you. There's been other individuals that have attended the meetings. Thank you, Hamiltons. They've attended the meetings and have been supportive too as we've, as we've worked through this too.
You know, and also throughout, I've talked to Dustin earlier too. You know, Dustin really, you know, I've worked with some developments as a banker, but there's a lot on technical side I don't know. I really look to especially the engineer as far as the technical piece. And Dustin really works with the majority of our developers in the gang. So you know, from a technical standpoint and expertise, I appreciate that and digging in and that piece of it.
Absolutely. Like I said, there are several things that made a lot of sense that you pointed out, so we really appreciate that. Any other questions or comments?
Would you, would you describe our, our current ordinance as, as antiques?
Yeah, the nineteen seventy version?
Yes.
Yeah, it's the current, the current ordinance, and Dustin can attest to this, leave a whole lot up to the imagination. So there's, there's not a lot of structure or rigidity there. It's really up to whoever happens to be reviewing it that day and how they feel can, can make a lot of difference in a development. So what we like about this update is that there's prescribed regulations, rules, and, and there's steps to take. It's very specific. It's, it's not up to just opinion or how someone's feeling that day.
Previously very arbitrary.
Absolutely.
And adopted prior to the construction of this building.
That's true.
Well, they would have been in some other building that they would have been sitting, even before you, Gary. Might have been out there in the crowd as a, as a high school student.
Been in junior high. Been in elementary school.
But you came and commented on that when they adopted.
There's a hindrance in the record. We're not clear which hindrance.
That was me.
Okay.
Hinder's, insert any first name. Paul, any other questions for Lucas or? Then with that, I think we'll go ahead and move forward then into, this does have a public hearing. And with that, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Have that right? It doesn't have a public, it does not have a public hearing. But we have everyone signed in here and so with that, we'll go ahead and I've got, I think, five or six folks that have signed in to speak. So usually asked that you try to keep it with, for three minutes, but we'll, we'll work to work through it. First one, Ty Roberts. I've got you first if you want to come up and.
Yeah, you bet.
Give us your name and address.
Case. Ty Roberts, and I think the address I've got on there is P.O. Box seven fifty-five. I think we need to quit talking so good about Dustin. I'm afraid he's gonna raise my bill because of it. He's getting big it over and out. So most of the stuff that I was concerned with, a lot of it was addressed, sounds like. With the exception of a few things, there's the, the traffic study. Really don't know, I don't know what, what that entails, what, what the city's looking for or what we as developers are gonna be looking at with that traffic study going forward. So I have some questions on that. Also, the, the underground versus the overhead. Not sure why, why the city feels that underground, I mean, I like underground better than, than the overhead, but that doesn't mean that later on down the road, that I may not see something that, hey, you know, maybe overhead's gonna work better here. And so that was another question that I have. So those two items are kind of, kind of sticking points for me, other than some of the ones that y'all corrected. And, and I appreciate you guys looking at that, Joe, and you guys taking care of that because it, it does help. And I know y'all put a lot of time into it and, and getting this put together. So we do appreciate that as well and it's gonna be good for all of us, I think. What I would like is maybe another month or so to look at this, maybe even get in a room together and, and go over things. Explain to me why, why we need the traffic study, why we want underground versus overhead. I've got quite a bit of experience in that field and so I'd love to hear y'all's thoughts on it. For that reason, I would like to see us have maybe another month, maybe have a roundtable and figure out exactly what we've got. We're almost there. We're close. That's all I've got.
All right, Dustin, I'll get you up next here.
Dustin Davis. Whatever the address of this building is. Thirty-five oh one South Georgia. Like you guys said, I'm the engineer of record for, for a lot of these guys and spent a lot of time reviewing these subdivision ordinances. I appreciate the phone calls that I've had with a couple of you. Appreciate Lucas and the work that he's put in on this and the amount of time that he and I have spent on the phone. And we talked a lot today. Some of the items we agree on, some of them we don't, like you said, Gary, so we recognize that. And we talked a lot today, some of the items we agree on, some of them we don't, like you said, Gary, so we recognize that. I'm gonna echo a little bit of what Ty said on a couple of, I think we're ninety-eight percent there, just a couple of items are a little bit of a sticking point. The traffic impact analysis is gonna be fairly problematic. You know, I've heard a lot of times dealing with the City of Canyon that you're not Amarillo. And I agree, you're not Amarillo. You're not Austin, you're not DFW, not Houston, not San Antonio either. Feel like the, the traffic impact analysis is just somewhat overboard for what we're trying to accomplish in this community. And part of the problem is, there's, as far as I know, there's nobody in the Canyon, Amarillo, Lubbock area that does traffic impact analysis. We're gonna have to go find somebody out of a larger metroplex to get them in here to do that for us. We don't know what that's gonna cost, we don't know what the outcomes are gonna be. So we would definitely like to research that more before we approve that aspect of it. And like I said, I talked to Lucas, I appreciate him taking a look at those handful of items that we talked about. Couple of the, the timeframes are a little bit troublesome too, where if we make a change, we have to get approval of the change within a two-year timeframe. We would like to see that modified to submit for the change in that two-year timeframe. It is easy enough to usually to come to P and Z or to come to you guys, and that's usually a pretty small window, but you gotta factor into it the market also. You know, all these guys are, they're making decisions based on what the market is. If we have a two-year window and the market tanks and then it doesn't come back for eighteen months, now we've got to get all our stuff ready.
Talking about construction plans?
There's a couple of different places, I think it's a concept plan, preliminary plat, maybe construction plans, it shows up two or three times. But if we could get that modified to, we have to submit something within the two-year timeframe rather than get it approved in the two-year timeframe. Because we don't control meeting schedules for you guys. You know, you guys, I see it more often on P and Z where they don't have a quorum, so, you know, they, they miss a month. Well, then that's kind of puts us in a, in a bad spot where we may not meet that two-year timeframe. So if we could take a look at that. Overhead power, like, like Ty mentioned, I'm gonna kind of leave that to those guys. I think from the developer's standpoint, that is a little bit of a problem, but I'm more of the technical side. I did a little bit more research on international fire code, and Lucas, you and I did not get a chance to visit about this, but one of the new requirements is on a, on a stubout street. And for you guys that don't know, stubout streets are our current requirement. Haven't been enforced real well, but obviously they, they need to be done, and I'm in favor of those. In the ETJ or on large acre tracts, those stubout streets are usually two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred feet long, which is just the depth of a lot. That's fairly typical. But the way it's written now, if it's over three-hundred or over two-hundred feet, you have to have a temporary cul-de-sac. Well, the way international fire code is written is if it's, that's only required if it's a fire apparatus access road. I don't think we have to define the stubout streets as fire apparatus access roads. So I think there's a possibility we could maybe eliminate the temporary turnaround on those. So I think that needs just a little bit more research to, to make sure that they're not fire apparatus. And if you look at Appendix D in the international fire code, it, it alludes to the fact that only applies to if it has a fire hydrant on it. For the ETJ, those may not, may not apply, I'm not sure. So it's just a question that I have on my end. And that might be, we might need to consult Fire Marshal on that, I'm not sure. I'm gonna, on, on the more technical side, I appreciate you guys looking at removing the, the upstream drainage requirements. That's a big, 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 big deal. That's probably the most cost implications of everything that we have in here, which would be extremely problematic. So I appreciate you guys being willing to take a look at that.
Doesn't mean it's not coming.
Yeah, I'll argue with you at that time too.
Fair enough.
I would like to consider removing the drainage. We have some very technical drainage requirements in this ordinance. In my opinion, that needs to be policy, not ordinance. Cause we have a stormwater management criteria manual that we're required to follow, which is the City of Amarillo's. Some of these items, as they're currently written, in my opinion, somewhat contradict that manual. So now we're kind of in this middle ground, which one are we supposed to follow? Typically ordinance trumps policy. So I think that's worth taking the, just the consideration of what are we, what are we trying to accomplish by including drainage criteria in an ordinance? Cause we really want the ability to modify that later down the road. That's a technical thing that needs to be more at staff level than wasting your guys' time, in my opinion, so. We talked about easements, not requiring those upfront, so that, that was a big deal. So that's kind of my list of, oh, I do have one other. Block perimeter length. This is a kind of a fundamental change of how we've looked at things in the past. Traditionally, we looked at just block length. How long is a road from intersection to intersection, that's how we've looked at it. So block perimeter length is a new way for us to look at it, not opposed to that. But we feel like there's a, a big enough difference between urban and rural that the rural block perimeter length needs to be longer than what we're allowing for.
Three thousand right now on the.
Three thousand, what you have.
Which is probably ten to twelve acre lots.
I'd give it to about ten, it's the best I can get.
In a rectangle?
Yes.
And that's just ETJ, right?
No, that's actually.
We don't have any rule.
That's actually both.
There's actually three.
Separated out, it says ETJ at three thousand, but it accompanies the other ones are three thousand as well.
So it'd be SF forty-three, SF twenty, and your ETJ.
Right. Sorry to interrupt you, I'm just trying to make sure I get it right.
So it'd be three different ones potentially. I would like to see that possibly increased or considered to be increased to thirty-eight hundred, rather than three thousand? Just for those three areas, not the rest of them, I think the rest of them are probably appropriate.
The rationale?
It's gonna, there's gonna be a big increase in the number of streets that are gonna be built, which are turning over to the county, that's one thing. The other part is a much bigger cost, because you guys are really discouraging cul-de-sacs, which means more street. We're enforcing stubout streets, which is more street. We're gonna reduce the block perimeter length, which means more streets. So, and my focus on this is really towards the ETJ, which is all gonna get turned over to the county for them to maintain, which has been a big, what's that, big sticky point? But it's been something that you guys have really been paying attention to, which I think rightfully so.
So that gets you what, sixteen lots?
That's how I get it too, Joe, about sixteen. And that's all dependent on the configuration of the lot. Typically, a, a one-acre lot in Random County is a hundred-and-sixty-five feet wide by two-hundred-and-seventy feet deep. So with those dimensions, that's what I used to calculate, you get to about sixteen lots. So, which still keeps you underneath that magic number of thirty in the international fire code, which I think is, we need to, we need to adhere to that. So.
And that, are you saying?
You can go ahead, it's only agenda coding.
Are, are you saying that's just for SF forty-three and SF twenty, not S, not SF ten and the rest?
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, at the very bottom of that, it says ETJ.
Okay, I got you.
It would apply to that one too.
Okay, I'm seeing, I'm seeing. So the SF ten suburban and all that stuff, you don't?
I don't have any issue with those. I know I blew through those quite, pretty quick. Questions I can answer for you guys from our side of it?
I appreciate all your work.
Appreciate the opportunity to, to visit you guys and to present. Like I said, we're gonna agree on some, we're gonna disagree on some, that's fine. Definitely encourage each of you, I hope, I hope you guys have read through the ordinance and understand what, what these mean. If you don't, please, please ask, and that's your best we can.
Can I put you on the spot?
Absolutely.
Has this been a fair process?
You did put me on the spot.
Did.
I know, I'll say fair for the most part. I don't think the process was outlined as well as it could have been. Lucas and I talked about that a little bit today. We had some frustrations on our side about the communication back and forth, and he had some frustrations on his side, rightfully so, you know? He got a phone call today at two-thirty to discuss a meeting at four-thirty. That's, that's tough. So I don't think it was outlined as well as it could have been.
Have we included you as all, all along the way? Have we given people an opportunity to speak up all along the way?
To speak up, yes, I think the communication could have been better overall.
We could have got back to you quicker, as I said we would, and we didn't get back to you quick enough the first time, and I apologize for that.
I'd agree with that, and I would say too, so there was revisions, so from the time that I made my list of comments, apparently there's another revision out there. That there's changes made from the comments that I made a week ago. I have not seen that revision, I don't know if it's available, maybe it is, I'm not aware of that.
Mr. Riley?
Yep, we have that, it's, it's the one that was included in everybody's agenda packet, it probably came in at the final hour.
Okay.
But you did get the answers back to your questions.
They didn't get the final revised ordinance.
I got a response to my comments.
Okay, and we got that too.
And they did, they, that came very quick. That, that part of it was very quick, very much appreciate that. I think that was maybe a day or two. So that was, yeah, that was very good. The changes that were made related to those responses, I have not seen those, I don't know, I guess it's now exists, is what we're saying.
Yeah, like, like I said, I got back all the comments to you in that Word doc, and that's what I sent to Freeza Nichols to get the updated document. So I tried to make sure anything that was changed was in the response to your comments. And I think I, we, we found the one thing was missing was asphalt paved for the temperature.
Yeah, but like I said, I haven't seen the updated, the one that's in your agenda package, I, I have not seen that, so.
And there were no other changes other than the ones that Dustin had suggested that we made?
That's correct.
Okay, so anything we got you?
What, five to seven?
We haven't touched anything else, is I think is what I'm trying to say.
Five to seven?
Five to seven.
Some of, a lot of them were just clarification and?
All of them were clarification, and we had, Lucas and I went through a lot more today, they were clarification. I think he has a better understanding of our position, which is reflective of the, the four changes or five changes that he mentioned. I have a lot better understanding of, of y'all's position, so. There's, the only thing I would say, there's a handful in there that I made a comment and the response was disagree. No, okay, can we get a why? Can we, can we talk about why you disagree? Is there room to discuss it? So that's where I say that the process, fair, yes, could have been more well-defined, yes.
Having worked for a city previously, yourself?
Have.
And being on the other side of that, as, as, as a city, you think we, we did okay?
Yep, okay.
I hate to put you on the spot, but.
That's fair.
We're all here to hear this, and so I, I apologize, but I think we're just all here to hear this and.
I mean, it's clear, we're not gonna.
Cause we're all gonna walk away.
Not gonna agree on everything.
Correct.
And no one's saying we should.
Lucas, would, can I ask, would, Mr. Mayor, are you okay? Lucas, would, can the, with the traffic impact analysis, would that be a, would that be a waiver?
As it's, as it's currently written.
Is it a minor or a major?
It would be a major. And the traffic impact analysis, as it's written right now, it's not for every development, it's for a specific criteria, if you meet that. If your development is over two-hundred or more dwelling units or creates two-thousand or more trips per day, we also have in there, if it's involving streets not appearing on our adopted thoroughfare plan, which I have, we currently do not have an adopted thoroughfare plan, so we would not enforce that mandate until we have an adopted thoroughfare plan. So as of, as of now, if these were adopted as written, you can only do a TIA if you had more than two-hundred dwelling units or creating more than two-thousand vehicular trips a day.
We've done some TIA's, especially on commercial.
Any other questions for Dustin or?
Thank you, Dustin.
Thank you, Dustin. Yeah, I do really appreciate all the time you put in on it too, Dustin. Paul, it's your chance to ask questions on it. All right, next up have Jeff Hamilton.
Jeff Hamilton, seventeen three fifty-one Lightwing Road Canyon. And first of all, you know, we love the City of Canyon, that's the reason where we were so involved with these meetings, with the process, trying to make this right. Yes, we are developing Spring Canyon, yes, we've got other developments we wanna do, but we see this more as, as the future of Canyon. How do we make a better impact to get this right rather than just get it done? Because this impacts, you know, the, apparently it impacts the next fifty years, cause it might not be looked at again. And so that's, that's why we take such, you know, effort in this thing. Now, I, I will, I have learned something in, in just the last few minutes. Dustin is not the only one that's submitting comments, and, and, you know, part of that, you guys need to know, as, and I'm speaking for Davey and I and really Ty as well and probably several others, but our feedback goes to Dustin, Dustin's feedback went to the city. So don't misconstrue the fact that one person actually wrote the email. There were seven or eight that had impact in that and, and were like, hey, you need to look at this, hey, this really affects my deal, this really affects what we're doing. So, yes, we, we basically appointed Dustin as the head of that, cause he's, he is the engineer on most of these. He knows more of the technical details than, than I do. But at the same time, these were things that we gave him ideas and, and we trusted him, hey, go through this thing, let's look at the main points and let's, let's get to it. You know, the, the thing that I wanted to say, you know, and a lot of this stuff's been covered, but I'm gonna just reiterate this, we submitted fifty-nine points. You guys did do a good job, but, you know, we're, we're kind of in the same situation today as we were a month ago. Because we submitted fifty-nine points and it was our understanding, we're, we're giving you guys, hey, these are the things that we don't think got covered, since we finally had a chance to read the document, these are what we need to talk about. We submitted those, the responses came back, but we were under the impression that, oh, this would, this would show you guys, hey, we need to talk about this, let's have a meeting, let's, let's do like we did in December. On December sixth, we all got to meet, we had open comments and we went through, hey, this, this needs adjusted, this needs adjusted. We, we got it narrowed down, we did a good job. But yet, our responses came back, there are eleven responses that just say disagree. I don't know why you disagree, I don't know what you disagree with, I don't know, there's no other discussion. So I was, I was hoping there would be a meeting or a committee set up that could go over this thing to, to. The main, the, the things that got the comment of disagree, there were several of those that as a developer, that impacts greatly the cost involved. Now, yes, the developer in the end sets the price for a lot. We don't set those prices based on thin air, we set those prices based on the overhead and the, the costs that are involved to develop that lot. So everything that is in here goes in to add costs to developing a lot. We don't wanna add costs to developing lots because that pushes people to develop and to buy lots just outside the city and just outside the ETJ. It doesn't, doesn't help anything. And so we just would like the chance to, to go through and say, hey, what do you, what do we disagree with? You know, and it may be something that, oh, okay, makes sense, or we can't change it. So, you know, I'd like, I, I hate to sound repetitive as I did last month, but I would like to table it so that we can have those meetings come back where there's a, where there's a commissioner meeting and there are no public comments. We all understand, we all have read it, we all know what's in it, and we all agree to it. I'm not asking for it to be perfect, but I'm asking for it to be as perfect as we can get it thinking about the future. So that, that's what my, my ask would be, is let's, let's table it one more month. There's no reason, unless I don't know the reason, there's no reason to have it a must-have today. You know, there's still issues that change two, two hours before the meeting, that tells me this document's not completely finished. Let's get it finished, so. And so that's, yeah, I'll take any questions, I guess.
Trying to get Phantom Creek under these codes.
That's what I'm afraid of. Trust me, it greatly impacts me on that. And that's what, that's, that's the other thing in this deal is, when does a conceptual plan, plan get approved? What's, what's the process on that, that's part of this. Now granted, we have submitted everything, what he's talking about, I've got a, a development right beside Spring Canyon. It will impact the, the number of lots that I can get, how those lots are, are priced, and how that subdivision ultimately goes. According to the first document that we saw, we talked to the guy that we were partnering with, and we told him absolutely, no thank you, this can't be done. It, nobody can afford these lots. That's where we started having some negotiations, things are getting closer. And yes, I do think that that can be developed, but when we first saw the document, I was like, I'm out. I, there's no way. And so, yeah, it has real-world impact on what can be developed in the city of Canyon and just outside, and what that ultimately looks like, so.
Just so you know, Jeff, Joe spoke out of turn, by state law, invested. These won't, these won't affect you.
I tried the joke, but I, apparently I didn't. I was being sarcastic, Jeff.
Well, and I understand, but I, I want you to, I want everybody in here to understand what those meetings look like internally for us as developers. Yeah, it'd be great to, to sit up here and say, yeah, don't, it doesn't really worry about the cost, doesn't matter, just pass it on to the consumer. That's not fair to anybody. Eventually, it gets too expensive, nobody's gonna buy it.
And I will say, from a staff standpoint, we do discuss that aspect frequently.
And Jeff, I really believe that too, that that's been a part of it, that a big part of the reason we have delayed this and put it off and, and tried to pull in, and even making phone calls, is because do want to get it, get it right. And, and, yeah, I don't think we're gonna probably agree on every single point. I mean, yeah, Lucas is the expert, and he's gotta bring things to the table, that, okay, it really needs to be this way. But, uh, looks like to me, we've gone through a big list and we've come to, together on a big part of it, and, and maybe some more still.
Yeah, and I think we're close, I think we're a lot closer than, than four items that got, or, or a lot further away than the four items that got just recently changed. I just, there's more that needs to be discussed, but, um, I think it, it helps to know that, you know, we're working towards it.
Do you agree that there'll be things that we're not gonna agree on?
Totally. And I think that's, I think that is healthy in any organization. If you don't have a disagreement between somebody that you're working with in some capacity, then you're headed towards total agreement in whatever direction it is, and that's never a good thing.
Didn't work for NASA, right, group thing didn't work for NASA.
What's, what's realistic, Jeff, to you on trying to do, if we did follow up and didn't adopt tonight? What does that look like, meeting with our development community?
I think within another month. I really was hoping for that in the month that we tabled. I, I really thought that, that we would have a, a meeting and, and discuss each line item that we had had a chance to review, and then, you know, have some roundtable, some discussion, and we'd come out of that and go, well. We tried, we, we, we got what we needed, or what we thought we could get adjusted, so that the wording's correctly, so that everything seems to be right. We don't agree with X, Y, and Z, they don't agree with these, it's all good, and we know what's going to be adopted. The, the document changed, I mean, and not, not severely, but it did change as of February twenty-eighth. So seven days ago, it already changed again, then today it will change again because of two hours ago. So we're just not quite finished, let's get finished. Anything else?
Questions for Jeff? All right, thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, Justin.
All right, Davey, who do you got to up next, so Davey Hamilton?
All right.
Who was the better one to go first, you or?
I don't know. Davey Hamilton, uh, nineteen five hundred, Cates Cove. Several of them have been, uh, several of the items have been, uh, addressed since Lucas first got up here. The easements have been addressed, I'm happy with that, that's good, I think that's a good improvement. Um, the drainage study, that was a big one, as Dustin went over, as, as Lucas went over, that changed. But that didn't change until this afternoon, so that's what the frustrating process is. I wish we would have been able to get into it, so, um, you asked about the process, I don't like the process at all. I'll be the first to tell you, I think the process has been horrible, as far as communication. I think you guys intentionally get the stuff back to us late, intentionally don't send it to us quickly, um, things like that. Um, the, all, you know, all of us have been working on it for, for weeks and months. Lu- Lucas could have sent it out, Joe could have sent out, any of y'all could have sent it out to us the last, last week, but when it came out, I guess on the twenty-eighth, that process could have been done, you know, we have a vested interest in this, since November, we've been working on this, yet nobody bothered to send us the final revision that y'all voted on tonight.
And they probably could have done that, I was really impressed with Lucas's speed in getting back to Dustin the first time. I, I was really impressed, couldn't think into it, for a, a city to do that in just a couple of days, I was.
Thirteen, thirteen of them have disagreed, what do you disagree on? Okay, so what I heard from Cody, when I talked to Cody this morning, try, uh, uh, two, three days ago, I visited with Cody about some of these issues that I have, is he never hears any disagreement. Well, we do, there is disagreement out there, there is things that we, that we have questions or concerns about. So I want to have some passion in my voice, or some frustration, yeah, we're frustrated, okay? Um, this can be better, a better process, but he has my email, you have my email, everyone of, if you guys saw it on the twenty-eighth, si- send, push send, send it to us. So we, we're not even aware of these things out there.
Are you talking about the new?
The newest one.
Okay, that came out, what?
Twenty-eighth.
No.
We sent back all their comments the morning of the twenty-eighth.
That's when we sent the comments back.
You said?
We, we got the comments, the, these guys worked Thursday, Friday, I worked Saturday and Sunday on it. And I think you sent out, was that Monday, Sunday night, Monday morning? And we sent those at the same time to Freezing Nichols to implement the five to seven changes that were changing. And that, I don't know when those turned back around.
Would you, somebody pull up the first page of it, it says the date that they were?
We sent them back Thursday morning.
So we got it back Thursday morning, the updated full version was Thursday morning.
What day, what, what's, what's the date of Thursday? Page one.
March second.
And I can tell you the reason I did not send an email to everybody is I responded to who I received comments from. So like you said, you all funneled your comments to Dustin, he sent me a, a list of comments, I sent him back a list of responses. So I would assume that, that he would have shared out all those responses with all of you, if, if you're the ones that worked on the questions. So I didn't send the updated document, because all the comments that I sent to Freezing Nichols to change that were in that Word doc.
Can understand that, but even Dustin said a minute ago, he did not get the final bill. That says updated February twenty-eighth.
That's incorrect.
Maybe it should be changed then.
She probably put the date that she received the comments on.
Oh, yeah, that's when she would have received them. But we got it back March second.
Point being, I'm more frustrated than any of the other guys, I'm fine just saying it. If you guys want to hear frustration, you're frustrated a little bit, okay? We could have put this together as a committee like we did in November, or in, in December, could have had a roundtable, but all these things that are with Dustin today need to be in a committee or with you guys, I don't have to be a part of it. But put a developer or two on it, put an engineer on it, put, put OJD, put Dustin on it, some, two engineers, put a couple of county council members on it, y'all choose. But this is not the process to have, be talking about individual items in the bill. Okay, we had fifty-nine items that Dustin submitted, okay? Fifty-nine.
And we saw all those, and we saw all the responses too.
Did every commissioner get it?
Yes.
Fifty-nine? Okay, everybody's got it.
Everybody got it, yes.
Just making sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's the, that's the frustration. Even the, even the thirteen that we got on there, the disagree, what do we disagree with? Not willing to share, or just?
That's the problem, that's the frustration. I get it, we tried to get them out timely, we got, the, I'm, I'm just gonna go on the other side. We got those the day after the deadline, and so we rushed as fast as we can to get those back in a timely manner.
So we've been, supposedly been working on for four years, and now listen, we're trying to get it?
We got fifty-nine comments the day after the deadline, and we rushed to respond. It was that, it was in the email, it was in the original email.
I didn't even know it was a deadline.
I didn't even, after the last commission meeting, I believe it was Dustin who's requested two more weeks to look at it. So the next day, when I sent all the redline versions out, I gave two weeks from that point to receive comments back.
I thought we had the whole month to, for comments.
Oh, that's why I emailed Dustin specifically the day that I was, said that today was the day, please send any comments you have, and he responded, I'll get your comments.
We tried to get it out as quickly, we're happy to sit back down and go through every item at a time. It'll take hours, but we can do it. We just wanted to get something out as quick as possible.
Yeah, but we're voting on it tonight, you're voting to vote on it.
Right.
And we had changes less than two hours ago.
Correct.
But part of the changes were because I requested that Dustin would visit with Lucas about any pain points in there, even though it had been addressed, and, and I think every single one of those fifty-nine was, uh, addressed, and so honest, I'm impressed, you know, with the flexibility for a city, I mean, we could just be saying we.
The responses, the response was quick, but the response was not complete. Du- Dustin, Dustin.
Sitting down and, you know, with cities sitting down.
Dustin, in his comments, when he made back the fifty-nine, fifty-nine responses for the group of developers, he, he had a list of why he, why he thought each fifty-nine items should be addressed, or what he thought about each one. But when you just say disagree, you're not even providing a response. We agree that we're not gonna, uh, re- agree on everything, but can we get a reason why we disagree?
Other possibilities, pick up phone calls, Lucas, I don't know if you might get that either.
That's how the process is, but this process is better in a, in a committee of some sort versus out in the public forum like this. That's my frustration.
These guys need to hear these comments you're saying, though, I don't think there's any frustration, I'm not frustrated, and none of our team is. They need to know the implications, Davey, like Jeff said, this could be on the books for fifty years, it could be.
Sure.
And so no one's frustrated, we want it all right, at the end of the day, even if it gets passed or not passed tonight, we all want it right.
Okay.
Fifty years of stuff, so it's gonna take a while, I feel like, we need to be.
And we've acknowledged to ourselves that we'll be reviewing it, it's not gonna all be right, even after you guys finish it, looking at it, it's not gonna be right. There's gonna be things we're gonna come back to the commission one day. Just like we do on the comprehensive plan updates, and just like we do on the strategic plan, there'll be changes.
If we're reviewing it right out of the gate, doesn't seem like we're there yet. My main comments that I had were the, were the, were the drainage easements and the, uh, or the, uh, offside private easements, that was just, that was, uh, that was, uh, agreed to, and the drainage. Uh, the other ones that I would like to bring up again, should the city dictate the underground power? I don't think so, I think that should, same, same argument these other two guys have had. Uh, the next one, traffic control analysis, that's just one more thing. Very seldom does that need to be, uh, be used, uh, we're not Dallas, we're not San Antonio, we're not Houston. We know what it's gonna impact, adding a few homes, okay? Uh, uh, we, don't throw that extra cost onto your developers. Another one that, yeah, comes up that affects some stuff that we're doing, concrete cul-de-sacs, never been an issue before. Now they're wanting all the cul-de-sacs to be, uh, to be, uh, page fifty-one talks about concrete, cul-de-sacs have to be, uh, concreted, and then on stubout streets, making concrete stubouts, or cul-de-sacs there. If you do that, potentially lose some acreage on your lots. That definitely affects you. The, uh, the other, other, uh, point that Dustin made is, uh, the linear footage of your blocks, lot lengths, stuff like that, the thirty-eight hundred foot would be greatly helpful in the ETJ. Appreciate y'all's consideration on those items before it gets passed.
Dude, let me go back to what you just said, were you talking about what's on page forty-one, the three thousand versus thirty-eight hundred?
The ETA?
Page forty-one.
Is that what you were just talking about, the last thing you said?
That's exactly right.
Thank you.
Comment number fifty-nine, page sixty. Development will not be connected to the city facilities for any reason, a written letter shall be provided to the city describing the following. Number one, the reason that the development is not connecting to the city facilities. Okay? Give a reason. Wastewater service for that subdivision, and number three, the developer's due diligence conducted towards regarding the avail, uh, availability of adequate wastewater facility. I just, I don't know what that means, can somebody tell me what comment three means?
Yeah, I mean, go ahead, no, no, go ahead. The response I gave, uh, in the comments was that it's, the city is asking the developer to, to have certification that there will be adequate means to dispose of wastewater. So if that means we're outside of the city and we're developing, and we don't have sewer, you can say, we're gonna do OSSF for every lot, then you've, you've shown adequate facility.
And that's adequate in that statement alone?
Or if you had a municipal utility district.
There's options, not everybody's gonna do a sewer, or a septic, excuse me, somebody else might do it differently. But it's, we want to know what the plan is, so that we make sure, making sure that water and wastewater are addressed.
State law, are we obligated to make sure that?
Water, just water. TCQ and the area district will stop them all.
So what's the difference between number two and number three?
Which page?
That's the same.
Sixty.
You were just reading number three, so what's the difference between number two and number three?
What I'm concerned is, it's just ambiguous, and it leads to a lot of questions that we could get tied up on. Uh, the developer's due diligence conducted regarding the availability of an adequate wastewater facility.
I think number three would come into play if you weren't doing septic systems, if for some reason you were doing, uh, we have a city development that's doing a grinder pump. We want to make sure that due diligence was done, to make sure that the grinder pump is gonna handle the amount of sewage that comes out of there. So we'd want to see, if you're doing, if, if you're just doing septic systems on every lot, then number two and three would be the same. But if for some reason you're doing something that's unique or special to your development, we want to make sure that we have due diligence on showing that, hey, we have this number of lots, this is the system we're proposing, we're showing you that this number of lots will be handled by this system.
I don't have a problem with that, what I do have a problem with is it makes me, when I read that, I think that it becomes my responsibility to, to do a study on whether wastewater and public water can be brought to my property, that's what it makes me feel like. And so, um, so those can be expensive studies, and...
That sounds like y'all are talking about two different things.
I think we are too. It's ambiguous.
I think it needs clarification. I think that, because it is confusing.
What was the?
It's pretty much, we have some standard language in our current records right now, uh, that's very similar to this, this one's a little more into the weeds and the current ordinance. Um, essentially, it's just certifying that we're, that adequate wastewater is being served, and so, I mean, I've...
We, we probably dug in a lot for, so, uh, and you know what? I, I know Canyon's the, probably the, the fastest growing community in Panhandle Texas. Uh, you know, we're interested in that, uh, continuing and, and working well with, with the growth and development, and being able to do it and do it right. Uh, so, um, I, I appreciate voices and different voices coming together in the process, I, I think that makes a lot of sense. Joe, just Joe's thoughts, or we, where we?
We, uh, we definitely will talk, uh, we did talk about traffic impact analysis, we will have some staff level discussions on that, uh, to have a little more conversation, especially with public works, uh, and see on that. I'm pretty good with everything else that Lucas has prescribed here, and then we just have some conversations. If they want to sit down and, I mean, understand why we disagreed on anything, we can do that, it's gonna be extremely time-consuming, but we can do that.
Yeah, I want to just say that, um, I believe that the city of Canyon and our staff has done a really good job, an intentional job, responding to every comment. There were several items that we disagree on, because the comment was a statement. And I said, disagree, because we disagree with whatever the statement was made, whether that be, um, concrete cul-de-sacs should not be allowed, well, disagree. I didn't think that there was too much, uh, more that I needed to say on those, and as Joe said, we were trying to get those turned around timely. I think at this point, to the best of our ability, we've made sure that these subdivision regulations are to the standard that we want to uphold in the city of Canyon. And honestly, I think a lot of the things we disagree on are gonna come down to, to the reason we disagree, because it's a cost for the developer. So everything that's been a technical issue, or an error, or grammar, or needs clarification, we've tried to, to really accommodate, make changes, et cetera. But I think at this point, uh, we're definitely willing, as Joe said, to sit down and talk more about why we disagree, about why we made decisions we did. But I just want to tell the commission tonight that I think we've done a, a good and thorough job, making sure that this is the direction we wanted.
Before I sit down, do anybody have any questions for me? I know I've been pretty vocal. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Seth.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Uh, we do have one more. JT?
Looks like you've sat in as well.
No.
Yeah. I'm JT Laramore. I'm representing the Builders Association. My address is thirty thousand four hundred South Saucy. Yeah, it's been fifty-three years since we've done this, so I come to put a pause on it. The reason why is there's just under forty different development uh, bills going through state. So one of the things is, it's gonna be done. They're gonna know the answers by probably May. So why not put a halt on this, make sure that our building codes and all of that align with it? Obviously, there's been some issues and some changes, but that's what really upcoming to see if we can hold it till May to kinda see if there's legislation is gonna come down to give us a different method. I know uh, ResNet is changing. I know that some of the building codes are changing and that's gonna funnel down to the local side. Some of the development things that are changing is the size of culvert, not necessarily related to cement or metal or any of those things, but the sizes of, of them are coming down uh, the pipeline. So I just didn't, that was what my thoughts were is if we already have hesitations to it, what's the harm in waiting basically sixty days?
Because we've been working since two thousand nineteen on this project. So I think the major change that'll occur, my, from my standpoint, will be ETJ. That will be the major change and so those will become move points at that point. Our ETJ, if it goes through, will be reduced to a thousand. Thousand feet and so if that happens, it happens. It still won't abrupt the majority of this. We'll still have an ETJ.
Okay. And then are y'all gonna have a standardized review process? Every ten years that it needs to be reviewed or?
I hope so. We can do better.
Okay.
I think we'll be seeing it more like earlier. More frequently than that.
Okay. That's really my only.
I think partially, you know, the last, I know Paul and I have discussed this lately. Mid-seventies, last real growth we had, I think you and I were discussing, probably prompted the subdivision regulations in the seventies and so it's kind of a cyclical thing. So we'll see how it goes.
Okay.
Thank you, JT.
That's kind of obvious to see that there's a lot of issues haven't been discussed and this, and the city's done a good job. Y'all guys have done a good job and I can see where a lot's a problem and the problem is, is uh, there's, well, let's say there's not really a team leader that's working back and forth. So, I mean, it's kind of something what I'm good at and you, the commissioners who I'm talking to, well, we do is think about the citizens of this town that's put us in here. They want it done, hurry and they don't, it, and not a big hurry. I am. And what I'd like to do, I'm gonna make a motion that you appoint me as head of a committee. Go through all the subdivision, all these issues and we'll get them all worked out and uh, we'll bring it back to you and we'll have a subdivision regulation that you'll be proud of, that submits to your citizens. City will be proud of and these developers will be proud of. And I'll make a motion that you make appointment with me as a leader, a team leader, a committee head or whatever.
Is there a second for the motion? If, if not, that motion will die for a last couple of seconds. But I think we are to the point that we are talking about some sort of meeting process and communication here to, to get this wrapped up and, and two-way dialogue to, to work through some of the, the final points. But also, uh, you know, offers out there too to go through, either the ones that uh, were disagree and, and talk about why I disagree and you know, I guess there might be some possibility that that uh, would be a change too, but uh, um, anyway. I think Lucas, Joe, Joe, your, your thoughts as far as a, a process and, and uh, you know, to, to sit down and meet and, and to get that piece of it wrapped up.
I think it's gonna be best for Lucas and Dustin to sit down together first and have a consensus, understanding of where we wanna go uh, as two individuals. Any involvement from the commissioners wanting to meet with staff at any time about this, uh, I highly encourage to do so. We'd be happy to meet with y'all any day, anytime to work through any of these comments and what, what we're hearing. Uh, we've got nothing to hide and we're here to make this and get this done.
Yeah, I thought, I think we do need to table it, but I think we need a timeline.
That's, that's my only concern and you know, I'm, I, I think if we can do a month at the latest, you know, we have two weeks to our next meeting. But it'd be ideal for, before the end of the week, that we have some sort of plan of action that Lucas and Dustin have sat down and discussed on efforts moving forward and addressing a lot of the concerns that Jeff and Davey brought up as well as the others brought up to get a plan of action in place. That could then be communicated back out to the elected body and to the developers.
So we have a motion to?
Are we making a motion to table it or is there a timeline attached to that motion?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Well.
So did you make that motion?
Well, I'm, I'm making a motion to table it, but do we need a timeline associated with that?
My question is, is a month satisfactory?
Okay. Okay.
I think that's what Kelsey's trying to ask.
Okay, I misunderstood. I'm sorry.
I mean, does a month feel sufficient to everyone?
We were looking at our, we were looking at the calendar later, Joe. There are, there's some dates on there that we need to look at.
I don't want it to feel like a rushed process. I wanna make it right for.
Can we ask Lucas his opinion? Is a month enough time?
It'd be March third or April third, right? I am out of town April third. Um, nothing that matters. I'm fine. I'm fine with April third, uh, that meeting or the seventeenth.
Good. Gretchen's gonna propose May the first and the eighteenth, I believe, Joe?
Yes. Yes, of May.
Of May. So if we roll into there and that would be uh, we have two new commissioners.
So what would be the next meeting that you would be at that uh, after thirty days and Lucas?
Seventeenth. Of April.
Seventeenth of April.
Okay. That's six weeks from today.
That that would be brought to the city commission then?
Okay, I'm making a motion that we table it and bring it back to the commission on April seventeenth.
Of a motion, a second, um, to table this and bring it back to the commission on April seventeenth. All in favor of the motion, uh, you know what? Excuse me, let me ask about, uh, any discussion. Yes, I'm sorry.
I, I'm just gonna say I disagree. I think time's done nothing but hurt us. I think more times, I mean, what's, I don't, I don't know what time's gonna change. I kinda like what Paul is leading towards, like somebody on this commission. Leading that effort or be involved in that effort. I, I'm not sure what they're, what's gonna change between. I think there needs to be a set committee specific to address this issue with a set time to bring back to us instead of allowing what's been going on to go on. Cause I don't think it's, I don't think it's been.
I think that month's time is gonna be Lucas mostly just explaining, um, explaining things to these guys.
I think they fully understand.
I don't think they do. That's why they're saying, why, why was this declined?
I don't think it's that they don't.
What, what if it's an issue that they don't agree on, the developer, developers don't agree on, the city don't agree on? Who's gonna make that decision? The city? Why shouldn't it be us, commissioner? Why should that issue come to us and we decide we went overhead or not overhead? Not, not just.
We're gonna, we're gonna come back and get down the weeds that much for, for individual thing.
Yeah, yeah, it's important.
We're gonna, we're gonna.
You have no idea what it's gonna cost to have a lot built. It's important as hell.
We're gonna come back to this meeting and this exact same thing's gonna happen. You'll have the exact same people come forward and say, yeah, they told us they disagree, but we disagree also. We're gonna be, I mean, nothing, nothing's gonna change unless we have somebody sit and arbitrate those.
But I, I see if, if we get it to this point and we come in and, and agree and, and yeah, there are some points that Lucas comes back, this is my thought. If he comes back and says, it's just gotta be this way, you know, for the city, then yeah, we have the decision to make. Okay, if there's three things that uh, uh, Dustin and the group comes back and says, completely disagree, then yeah, I think it would be our prerogative, just like the second motion, to adopt it, but with these one and three changes or so. So, yeah, I think it still could come back that way. But I do think this gives us time to hopefully come back to where most everything's on, on agreement and, and we're aligned with the dozen items and all. So, I mean, if we're gonna go down that road, we really need to get it down to a handful of things that we can make that decision on.
You need a facilitator or it ain't gonna get done.
I think Lucas is that facilitator.
I thought I saw a lot about that. Based on the conversation I had with Dustin today and he can correct the others. I could count the number, but I have the exact questions he has for me highlighted in his discussion comments of the things that we still disagree on. I think it's about eleven. And so if you want us to bring those eleven things to the commission and name them out one by one, we can do that.
More than likely, some of those ones aren't gonna change. I'm gonna disagree on overhead power for an aesthetic and wind load. We, most of the staff disagrees on overhead power. Overhead power is cheaper. There's a cost effective, overhead power is cheaper than running ground, underground. I mean, that, that's not gonna change.
And that's elected officials should make that decision. We're the ones voted in here.
Correct. That is y'all's, that is y'all's prerogative at the end of the day. Paul is correct. So how do we skin this? I was gonna say, skin this cap. Do you wanna narrow it down to a, a certain amount and then?
There's a motion on the table.
I didn't hear one.
Yeah, there is a motion here, so.
I didn't hear what Cody was saying from them the same way, but if, I mean, it doesn't. If you wanna appoint somebody to be the, the middle person or a committee or something, we can do that. That's not how I had understood what they were saying today.
I think Lucas is.
We go ahead and vote on the motion and then can come back and hit one another motion and regarding if that property appropriate. Can we hear the motion again?
Okay.
I'm making a motion that we table it and bring it back to the commission on April seventeenth.
Second and again. Okay, uh, we have a motion second. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Vows like sign. Motion passes three to two. So at this point, I take it the, the process is going to be Lucas and, and Dustin heading up the uh, what it looks like and, and bringing whoever to the table to go through the, the process. With obviously uh, Joe in the middle of it too. I think we need some other directives or even a motion if that's not uh, is that, is that fair enough? Joe, Lucas?
At the end of the day, I mean, if you wanted to go and change one, one section, like Paul just said, you can do that at any of the street. Only thing we'll disagree on, on health and safety issues. And so those were mentioned at times, but I think we gotta try to do, accomplish a little bit what Paul's saying, but also not try to get back down deep in the weeds like Gary's saying. I think we're trying to find a happy medium for that. That's what, that's what we're looking for right now.
So yeah, my thought is I would be hopeful there's not ten things that we're trying to figure out here on April seventeenth. It is down to a couple of pain points and, and you know, that's what it is and we can discuss it.
The other part would be to have one liaison from this body and one liaison from the development to assist Dustin and Lucas and I through this process, to at least have that conversation. When we have those meetings. I think those two still need to be the main ones, but if we can narrow down the ones to get to a fine number of where, hey, we just, this is what, I mean, we're not gonna change on either side. And it's gonna come down to that. Those regulations.
Since you've appointed.
Is mayor, can I appoint somebody?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just curi-, I'm just curious, can, I mean, since you've appointed people to committee, can I ask them? What ballpark, how much time do you think this is gonna cost? We get all in a room together, I, I guess you're asking me or you're asking? Yes, I'm asking you. Uh, I think if we get in a room together, we can get it done pretty quick. But at the end of the day, I agree with you. We're gonna come back with a list of how many things that we don't agree on. And then how are we gonna resolve those? That's, I wanna go back to basically your question, John. How was the process been?
We, we don't. They have to, they have to do that, right? It's, it's out of our court at that point in time.
Are we just coming back to you guys with ten things and we go through them one by one?
Well, is ten reasonable or no?
Can you get it down to about four?
It's a significant document, y'all.
Well, based on the, and, and I'm not gonna speak for Lucas, I think we're maybe on the same page. Based on our conversation today, there are some things that I brought up. He said, well, we're not gonna agree on that. There are some things that he brought up, so we're not gonna agree on that. And it was probably ten things.
Is that? I think it's ten or eleven.
So what do we do from there?
Like trapping, trapping impact analysis. I mean, it may go one way, it may go the other. I wanna talk to Dan some more on that. Dan and I have not even had a chance to have a conversation on that before we make a call on some of these items.
Uh, you know, I'm just trying to think through the practicality of that. I mean, it's, you know, can't hardly make one motion and, and, you know, ten and, and everybody's got different thoughts. I mean, you have ten different motions or I don't know.
Have to update it again.
I guess we can work to figure that out, but uh, the, the more we could narrow that down.
Hell, we could do that tonight. We wasted an hour and a half. I don't know why we'd. It's gonna cost Dustin less money out of his pocket to continue to work to help us solve our issue.
You know what? We've got a, a motion second on the floor. Uh, we really need to go ahead and vote. Uh, maybe I'll let you visit after, but I, I think technically we need to.
Say one thing? I really think we need some sort of a commissioner. If y'all don't want Paul, appoint somebody else. Somebody from the pub, selected by the public.
Uh, let, this is uh, let, let us vote here, so. You're right, we did.
We did, three, two.
You know, honest, I've got the same thought. I mean, Paul has the expertise. I don't think Paul needs to run it. I, I think that Lucas and, and Dustin and Joe can, can run it. Yeah, I, I agree. I think Paul is a good one to, to be in there.
And Commissioner Jones is the only one that attended the meetings.
Is that a, is that in the form of a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Can you clarify?
Second.
Did they, did you, that, that Cody's up there?
No, he just talked to Paul down there. I heard some scuttle.
She has to come clarify the motion.
Let's see.
Could you clarify the motion?
My motion is to include uh, Paul as a member of this committee, uh, being to figure this out to come to consensus.
And I second that motion.
As an elected official.
Do you want to have someone of the development committee also on that as well?
Yeah, what's the committee?
You know, I think Lucas and Dustin and.
It's a public meeting. Anybody has access to that meeting.
You've been the only one that's been attending?
No, I mean, as far as developers go on, any public, any member of the public can meet.
From the commission?
Cody has gone to.
It's a public meeting.
Then you should be appointed if you've been gone all of them.
I mean, there's a motion, so we'll wait and see how that flows.
All right, we'll go ahead and vote here. So all in favor of the motion to uh, uh, appoint Commissioner Lyons as part of this committee, signify by raising your right hand. Vows like sign. Motion passes three to. If we had first amputations.
Take a break for a second.
Yeah, I think, are, are we, any other comments, commissioners, we're good on this?
Sure, we're good.
All right, um, what time have we got? Five forty-nine. Uh, we'll take, you know what? Let's just take a five minute break.
Should I have to chill?
This is fun.
No, that's new. I just say, I am believing.
So that's the significant cash inflow. That can actually be a tricky accounting situation to handle, but as I mentioned earlier, they were able to get all of the i's dotted and t's crossed before I ever even showed up. Makes my life so much easier. The rest of the balance sheet stayed pretty consistent year over year. I will point out unrestricted net position down there at the bottom of the page of 1.6 million dollars. That is the equity if the corporation were to take all of their assets, convert them to cash, pay off all the obligations, that's what they have left over. Over on page five, the statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in net position. Sales tax of 1.1 million dollars, it's a pretty healthy increase of year over year. We're seeing across the Panhandle, sales tax rate or our sales tax receipts are continuing to rise. We did see a slightly higher percentage in the Canyon area than some of our other cities. Just you've got some nice residents that are staying home and spending their money here rather than going elsewhere. Economic development projects of 854,000 dollars is what the EDC is primarily engaged in. And there's a list of those in the back that is up a fair amount over the previous year. The rest of the salaries and benefits actually did increase by a fair margin as well, but that's because of the interim director that you had to hire over the summer months. He, his costs were pretty substantial. Everything else stayed fairly consistent year over year. Page six, the statement of cash flows. You can see exactly where all the EDC's cash came from as far as physical cash receipts. Top line, they did receive 1,123,000 dollars from sales tax. And then the other operating revenues. Their net cash provided by operating activities continues to be a positive number, which is what we always look for. I'll be reiterating that when we talk about your utility fund. And then you can see where they spent, or in this case, where they continue to receive additional cash flow. The receipt from the sale of the building, the proceeds or the payments that they made on their long-term debt obligations, and then various interest payments. The proceeds from investments right there in the middle of the page of 184,000 dollars. That is the conversion of full certificates of deposit. Starting on page seven is the notes to the financials. The ones that I think this commission would be the most interested to talk about or to see. First one being note number seven at the bottom of page 13. This is the discussion of the EDC's long-term liabilities. So you can see the three notes that they have outstanding for the Highway 60 project or land, and then the notes that they took out to purchase the properties along Fourth Street. And that's where the debt began, the payments that they made and where it ended. And then just one page over, you can see what their projected cash outflows year over year with principal and interest payments for the next several years or for the next eight years are going to be, assuming no changes in their debt, what they've committed themselves for. They'll have the Highway 60 project paid or land paid off. Actually, you may only have one more payment left on that because they should have already made the 2023 payment on that. Note number nine on page 15. About 854,000 dollars that I touched on, that is the actual physical projects that they paid out during the year. So you can see exactly what they funded. And you can see by the year exactly how long some of those projects have been ongoing. And then note number 10, which is a very lengthy, multi-page note, just breaks down all of their ongoing projects and commitments, project by project with each paragraph there. So that any of the readers of financial statements can see exactly what they have committed themselves for and what the future outflows on those commitments would be. Several of them did, were fully funded during the current year. Many more are still in process and will be funded for several years to come. Like I said, I was just going to try and hit the highlights for you. This last letter on page 19, the city has the exact same letter, so I'm going to cover that with them. I didn't want to take up. I'm going to spend a lot of time talking about the city, so I didn't want to spend a lot of time with the EDC. So I just tried to hit the highlights for you. Are there any questions or concerns related to just the corporation that I can address for you this evening?
I'll make this brief. Nice to see sales tax over a million dollars for our half cent with EDC.
They, they are having a really, well, the city as a whole with sales taxes having a really good year. From what I'm understanding, talking to other cities throughout the Panhandle, that looks like it's going to continue through 2023. Are you all seeing the same thing?
Yes.
Tribute over here. Are you all seeing the same thing?
Mr. Wright would say yes.
That's, that's fantastic. That's going to really benefit you.
Move we approve. Have a motion as, do I have a second? Have a motion, a second to approve the audit of the CEDC. All favor signified by Rachel Rockin. Pose like sign. Thank you, John.
Thank you, sir.
And John's up next as well with item number seven. Consider and take appropriate action on audit of the financial statements of the city as of and for the year ended September 30th, 2022, as presented by the finance director and Dozier Pickens and Francis. Joel, actually, did you want to add in here too? And?
Just a comment, the, the financial statements are the city of Canyon's responsibility. They come from numbers that we provide to Dozier Pickens and Francis. All the information is coming from us. Those financial statements are the responsibility of the management of the city of Canyon. All that Dozier Pickens is responsible for is performing an audit, an issue, and opinion on those financial statements. So just keep that clarification in mind.
You're doing journal entries and all that reconciliating.
Yes, and the internal control 365 days year round to prepare reliable financial statements. John will speak to the proposed financial or adjusting entries. They did propose some adjusting entries and we made those adjusting entries. And majority of those had to do with the annual adjustment we make for the accruals for the retirement plan and the OPEB insurance plan for the retirees. Everything else was, was adjusted prior.
Cody, you'll take my head off for this one, but I really did visit with Joe earlier today and felt like there is so much good information in this. I would like to see us take close to an hour and maybe that's a stretch for today's meeting, but I really do. I think.
I was really hoping Joe was lying when he called me.
Yeah, timing's everything here, but there, there really are a lot of good numbers to.
I'm pretty sure I'm not the only one that would be upset by that. I don't know why you're seeking me out.
I'm getting some daggers behind me.
And I don't know, I even threw out to Joe, maybe it is a work session later to dig in on some of this, but I, I do, I, I think there's a lot of really good information for us to dig into, so. Maybe we don't need to take quite now, but.
My, my suggestion would be let us cover the major things. And John and Joel and I would be happy to sit down with you to go further in depth or anybody else that would like to go further.
You know, to me though, I think it really is the full commission. There's a lot in here that is good to know.
I rescind, I rescind my immediate offer.
To your point, Mr. Mayor, you are correct. There is a lot of good information here. I'm going to touch the highlights that I think are going to be of the most interest to the commission immediately. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to stay and answer them. I, I'm speaking for Joel, but I think you would second that, that sentiment as well. So with that being said, let's go ahead and dive into this and see if I can keep it under an hour, maybe by five minutes. That was supposed to be a small joke on your part, sir. Okay, page number eight, that's going to be quite a ways down, is our independent auditor's report. Joel took a little of my thunder here, but that's okay. This report format has changed significantly over the previous year. The government accountability office, the lovely folks in DC that write the standards, that's exactly where I'm going. Thank you, ma'am. The lovely folks in DC that write the standards that I have to abide by just cannot seem to leave well enough alone. So what they've done now is they've started off telling you what we've done and giving you our opinions, effectively what you've engaged us for. We've audited the accompanying financial statements of the governmental activities, the business type activities, the discreetly presented components unit, the major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of the city of Canyon, Texas as of and for the year ended September 30th, 2022. The reason why that's phrased that way is we're actually issuing several different levels of opinions. The governmental activities are all the funds of the city aggregated together into a singular unit with all of the long-term assets and liabilities presented. The business type activities would be your utility and your golf fund, along with their respective capital project funds aggregated together. And then the discreetly presented components unit, we're issuing another opinion on the EDC. The major fund scales us back down to the fund level presentation. This is what you're used to seeing coming out of Joel's office on a monthly basis. It's each one of the funds broken out separately, but you won't see any long-term assets or liabilities there. That presentation is effectively cash in and cash out. At each one of these levels, we're designing our materiality levels and our various tests. That way we get a good comprehensive audit of the city. Second paragraph is in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material expects the financial position of the various levels that we've already talked about. It is the cleanest opinion we can give. Your finance department is in excellent, excellent shape. Joel is probably, and I, I can say this because I've known Joel for going on 20 years now. Joel is probably one of the best people that you can have in that position and the best news. And I alluded to this with them, but with him, it's even more important. He's not elected. Chain him to his desk. He is not allowed to go anywhere. You are being served tremendously well by his knowledge and experience. And I'm going to get to why in just a second. He did talk about our adjusting journal entries. We did have a belief, if you consolidate all the funds down into one entry, when we adjust the TMRS plan or the TML plan for both pension and OPEB or the TESRS plan, we have to spread it over all the funds. So that increases the number of journal entries, but we're still only adjusting one item. So when you consolidate those down to just how, what we're adjusting, I believe we had five different journal entries that we had to propose. For a city your size, that is unheard of. The fact that your books are that clean, that is a testament to his abilities and the fact that he is, his diligence is keeping you well informed and providing you numbers that you can make good decisions off of. Okay, moving on, the second section there is our basis for opinions. It tells you the standards that we use to conduct our audit. The third section is the responsibility of management. This is Joel's absolute favorite, it's the one that puts him on the hook. It talks about, as he alluded to, that the management of the city is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America, including the design and implementation of internal control. It added one more responsibility to him this year, although I think it's a really easy one. In addition to all of that, he has to promise me that the city's going to be here in 12 months. I think you can do that. That's pretty easy. I don't know why the GAO decided to include that standard, but it is universal across the board for all governmental entities that their management has to assert to the outside auditors that you will be a going concern for 12 months. Fairly simple. The next section down is the only change in this document that I actually agree with. It's the auditor's responsibility for the audit of the financial statements. What this does is it really spells out in very plain English. In fact, it even bullet points it exactly what we are taking responsibility for versus what we are not. There is a study conducted and apparently across the nation, governing bodies were getting a financial statement audit and a forensic fraud audit conflated. They are not the same thing, they do not have the same goals. You did not engage us to come in and root out fraud. We are required that if we come across any indications of it or suspicions of it, that we bring it to your attention. But that is not the primary purpose of what we're accomplishing here. So this just puts everybody on the same page as to what really is going on. Okay, and then there's some required supplementary information that we'll talk about in a minute. The last paragraph there on page 10, one more page over, talks about, there we go. In accordance with the government auditing standards, we've also issued our reports dated March 3rd on our consideration of the city of Canyon, Texas's internal control over financial reporting in our tests of compliance with certain provisions of laws, regulations, and contracts. And I'm going to go over that in more detail in a minute. Starting on page 11 is Joel's, I'm giving you the credit for writing it, but I'm pretty sure Joe had a pretty significant hand in it.
I haven't changed the structure we did two or three years ago.
The management's discussion and analysis report, this is unaudited by us. It is prepared by the management of the city. But what it's talking about is what's happening in the city beyond the numbers, what's happened historically, economically, to bring you to where you are today, and what the future plans for the city of Canyon are for the next five, 10, 15 years. None of that's information that I would have access to, so I can't prepare it on your behalf. They do a very excellent job on the preparation of it. I do highly encourage you to go through and read it. It is useful, useful information that provides a lot of good insight to the city, but it would take some time to get through it this morning or this evening. So we're going to go ahead and jump ahead to page 18. The city's statement of net position or balance sheet. It's going to be, yep, well, there it is, right there, alright. So you can see on the left-hand column, or actually on the left-hand page, we have the assets and deferred outflows of resources for the city. On the right-hand page, this does not work well for the screen, I'm so sorry. On the right-hand page, we have the liabilities and the equity. You can see on the various columns, the governmental activities would be your general fund, hotel motel tax, things of those, that nature, all aggregated together as I already alluded to. The business type activities would be the utility fund, the golf fund, and their respective capital project funds coming into the city as a total. And then off to the right, almost like a forgotten child, is the EDC. That was a joke for you. Okay. The meeting was a little tense, so I'm trying to interject some humor.
Oh, you haven't seen tense yet.
I'm trying to figure out if that's a threat for me.
He's showing my clock.
That's what I needed to hear. At the top of page 18, you can see the city ended with cash and cash equivalents in the total column of 10,500,000 dollars. That's up about half a million dollars from the previous year. The governmental activities column dropped about 1.7 million dollars and the business type activity increased about 2.3. The biggest reason for those fluctuations is where the ARPA funds were recorded in 2021 versus where they are in 2022. In 2021, they were recorded in the general fund. And then in 2022, the commission made the decision to move them over to the water and sewer capital projects fund. So that cash balance has fluctuated. Moving down the list, you will see receivables net about five lines down at almost 2.2 million dollars. That's up about 240,000 dollars over the previous year. That's squarely sitting in the governmental activities. It's franchise tax fees are up considerably over the previous year. Randall County has some inter, intergovernmental obligations related to the library funding that they owed you right at the end of the year. And then CISD had some reimbursements that they owed you. All of those receivables came in and were fully collected by, I believe, the middle of November. Keeping our, our way down, you will see a new section this year. This is where things are going to get in the weeds and I apologize. So leases receivable right there, about a third of the way down the page, do within one year and do in more than one year. There was a new governmental accounting standards board pronouncement, GASB statement number 87 that came out that basically did away with the term operating leases. It doesn't exist any longer. So anytime you have any type of long-term obligation, whether it's you as the lessy or you as the lessor, you have long-term assets and liabilities that have to be recorded here. So in this case, lease is receivable. You are serving, where you are leasing out, in this case, it's land, I believe, primarily. I think there's some other things too. So these are the long-term payments that the city is expected to receive coming back in. Okay. Yeah, that's what I was about to say. So there's a note disclosure in the back, or not in the back, but the notes that'll explain that a little bit better, but that's what that's related to and where that's coming from. Your net pension asset, TMRS, that is new this year. And what that is, is your pension plan had a TMRS and TCDRS combined. They had a very, very good year in the marketplace. So we're seeing across the Panhandle, net pension liabilities swinging over to be a net pension asset. It's purely related to the market gains that you had. So that is not something that's necessarily going to repeat in this fiscal year.
This is one I would like to spend a lot more time on. And I think maybe we can come back in another meeting and talk about the TMRS. But it is, it's huge, it's good news. I mean, to not have liability, a lot of cities have gone bankrupt. You know, I think it's, we have producer responsibility to have a knowledge of it. And, but what's taken place and a lot because of the investments is, is huge. But we've gone from having to add additional money back, you know, prior years. And it's over the last 10 years to be in this position. So that one to me is huge and for us.
For, for your TMRS plan, and I can't speak before 2015, but since 2015, you have not had to do any excess contributions. You've been able to just match with your.
And that may be, we were contributing 17% catch-up back in your 10-year numbers back then.
Yes, but that, that's the, that's what they, or TMRS is saying was your actuarially required contribution rate. It might have been a catch, they might have set you at that limit. Yeah, but that's where they put you at your required limits, meaning you couldn't dip below that from their standards and their standpoints. What I was referring to is in addition to, the city has the ability that whatever they set you at for a given year, whether it's 17.5% or 13.6% or whatever the number is, you have the ability, if you chose to, to go over and above that. And some cities and some counties are having to go over and above that just to kind of stay ahead of the curve. So your plan is working very, very well and your required rate. Yeah, your required rate has, since that 2015 date, your rate has, required rate has been able to drop from that 17.5 down to the 13.6. It's on page 79, sir. I don't know what the PDF page number is. Pardon?
Page 79 of your document.
Yes, ma'am.
It's page 79 in this book.
It's 140, Megan, so that's what Gary's talking about. If you look all the way back, retirement match from the city is two to one. The employee puts in 7%, we match that two to one, which is equivalent to 14%. And Gary was mentioning that in 2015 and 16, we had to put in 17.5% to, to make sure to get back in the, back in the black.
Right, and, and John, somewhere in here, you have that trend over time too, that liability, and it really.
That's just one page before where we're at, sir, page 78. That's the 10-year trend on your TMRS retirement plan. And it's going back to the calendar 2014 year, December of 2014 coming forward. And they do that December 31st date when they do their actuarial evaluations. But you can see your net pension liability in that 2014 year went from 3.3 million dollars and how it's fluctuated over time. This is a perfect place to look at what I was referring to, right in the middle of that page. And again, this is not really conducive to your screen, I apologize. Right in the middle of that page, you will see net investment income, and you can track that across those years. And when TMRS has a really good year in the market, your plan comes, your liability comes way down. They don't have so hot a year, it swings the other way. That, where I was originally heading was that I don't want you to see that pension asset on your balance sheet and think you need to scale back anything.
There's probably a pretty good chance it's going to be a liability next year because of what the market did. But even still, over time, if you look at what that's done, it's, it's, it's been good.
Yes, you, I mean, your pension, you had a couple of bad years there in 15, 16, and then it swung back again in 18 where it was a pretty bad year. But for the most part, you've been trending down ever since then.
But doesn't it normally go without saying that if we're going to talk real in-depth about this, that TMRS being in the room is usually best?
That's exactly where I was about to head. With the fact that the, the investment income swings your liability so wildly. And also, if you look just the fourth line down on the top of that page, there are differences between expected and actual experiences and there are changes in assumptions. That's them coming in and doing actuarial studies on the mortality of your staff, the tenure of your staff. If you've got a bunch of people who are getting ready to retire next year, that's going to fluctuate your overall liability.
And Cody, you're exactly right. I did mention that to Joe earlier today. We talked about that once over 20 years. I think it'd be good to do that, but with TMRS to come do that.
I always, I always get a little nervous when elected bodies start talking about TMRS or TCDRS without them in the room because we make all kinds of wild assumptions about what those numbers mean without them being interpreted by the experts.
And the other thing to really kind of drive that point home is how old these numbers are. Their evaluation was done, as I said, as of December 31st. So this was nine months old before we ever even started the audit. I cannot tell you, I, I don't have a wild clue where you are today. And that's why they really need to be in the room talking to you. So that.
Will work to make that happen.
Yes.
That, that love coming up here anyway.
That was a roundabout way of getting to why I don't want you to look at that asset and change anything. Please, please don't ever do that. The capital assets going all the way back to page 18 again, so sorry. You're, you're going to be scrolling a lot. Going back to page 18, the capital assets, your utility fund did have some pretty significant changes. By and large, though, it's related to the purchase of land that you had. You'd spend about 4 million dollars on, on acquiring some land. And then you did have some construction and process projects that completed. There's a note on page 43, I'm not there yet. There's a note that will be on page 43 that we'll talk about that in a little bit more detail. Moving on to try and get this kind of train moving, on page 19, the liabilities. The big change is the intergovernmental payable that you see. It's about four lines down, 3.9 million dollars. That's up just shy of 2 million dollars over the previous year. In the business type activities, it's the second payment you received on your ARPA funds. So that has now been fully received to the best of my understanding. I have been hearing that the state is tranching out a couple hundred thousand more dollars here and there to various entities. I really hope y'all, no offense, I really hope y'all are not in that group. But you should have your ARPA funds by now, so you can see kind of where your liability is sitting, assuming you don't spend the funds. Your non-current liabilities do within a year and do in more than one year. Those two numbers added together are up about approximately 2.5 million dollars. That's the changes in your long-term debt. And there's a note that we'll get to on page 49 that'll really elaborate that.
Where John goes on, just so you know, our ARPA, Fourth Street Pump Station, Ground Storage. That's what that's for, right? That's the project I know Randy talked about when he first got on. And then the Force Main, the last mile of Force Main to the wastewater plant. Now, I heard the tacitly will do, that's what's happening. Those are almost finally designed.
And that's what I was hoping to hear with the ARPA funds. You have until the end of 2024 to get those funds encumbered. And then the end of 2026 actually get them spent, or else it has to be refunded back to the treasury. So the fact that you've already got some what sounds like lofty projects and plan are in place, you shouldn't have any worries about what's going on there. The other big change on your retirement plans is your other post-employment benefit plan for TML. This is your, this is the health and trans plan, is it not, Joel?
Yeah.
Your actuaries came in and did their study and they actually lowered your liability. It's this 571,000 dollars, it's the second line to the end on that total liabilities section. That's down about 1.2 million dollars over the previous year. And that's just the actuarial study that they conducted with the employees and who's participating in the plan. So that's another one of those liabilities that's going to fluctuate kind of year after year. So that's where that's at.
Those mainly due, sorry.
No, please, go ahead.
Only due to TML changing insurance plans. They used to have these retirees with separate plans. And that was getting too expensive for them. And they absorbed those into the city group of employees. So now for experiments, they are able to use the whole city. So it brought those premiums down significantly. So now the premiums for the retirees is the same as is for the regular employees. So that's the main reason for that cost projected out over long-term is much less. As those premiums increase, which they really were going to be told premiums to be higher next year, that, that is likely going to change, that, that liability will start to come back up as those premiums.
Okay. Lastly, at the bottom of the page, you'll see your unrestricted net position. As I told you, for the EDC, this is the city's equity. If you took all your assets, converted them to cash, paid off all your obligations, this is what you'd be left over with. The 3.3 million dollars, almost 3.4 million dollars in the total column is up about 320,000 dollars over the previous year. If we look at the various columns combined or individually, the governmental activities of 2.6 million dollars is up about 1.2, whereas the business type activities of 745,000 dollars are down about 894. Overall, though, the city continues to be in very strong financial condition. Your equity reserves increased, your current ratio, the city's ability to pay off your obligations that are doing payable in fiscal '23, just using the cash you have on hand, cash and receivables you have, remains at two to one. So you do continue to be in, in strong financial condition. Page 20 is your income statement. We'll start on the left-hand side of this page for just a little bit and move to the right. It's another one of those facing pages. To refresh your memory on how the statement reads, in the top left-hand corner, we have the expenses of the city broken down by what we call functional area. You'll see the governmental activities at the top, the utility funds in the middle, and then the EDC at the bottom. Moving across the top, we have any direct charges for services, any operating or capital grants that were received coming into what it truly cost, uh, cost to provide those functions. And then down the right-hand column will be your general revenues, property taxes, sales and use tax, so on and so forth. That can be applied across the board, they're not program-specific. The biggest changes here, your governmental expenses of 13.1 million dollars are up about 613,000 over the previous year. It's about a 5% increase. We didn't see any one single line item or a combination of line items that really drove that increase. It was pretty much universal across the board, just increased costs. For the utility fund of 8, 8,996,000 dollars, that is up 974,000 or 12% of the previous year. What was really driving that up, and it's all sitting in water and sewer, by the way, the golf coursing expenses did not increase very much at all. But what, what was driving that up is salaries in all departments were up. There was a cybersecurity line item that was significantly higher than the previous year. The debt issuance costs on the new bonds that you issued were in there, and that was a pretty significant increase over the previous year. So all those things added together are really what drove, and then there was just general inflation as well. So all those things added together are what really drove your costs up. Charges for services staying with the utility fund, 10,763,000 dollars. That's up about 1.1 million dollars over the previous year. Again, primarily in the utility fund. And what that is, is you have significantly higher usage in 2022 than you did in 2021. 2021 was a very wet year and 2022 was not. So your, your water usage was much, much higher than it was. And you also did have some increased average total customers, you had some increase there. And then you had a little bit of a better collection rate as well. So now moving to the next page for, for her. The property taxes levied for general purposes and levied for debt service, and I apologize for the screen. It's, yeah, the 3.3 million dollars and the 357,000 right underneath that, your combined tax rate or tax revenue is up 279,000 or 8% over the previous year. What that increase is being generated from, you had a 9% increase in valuation from Brad that you really benefited from. To that effect, you were able to drop your tax rate by 2.7% from year over year. So you. So you should have, you shouldn't have had as good of an increase as you did because of that decreasing your tax rate. But the collections overall for property taxes as well was slightly better than it had been in previous years. So with that increased valuation, you were really able to generate some additional revenue, even though you dropped your tax rate. And that's where that is coming from. Sales and use tax, the next number down, you can see the city had almost 3.5 million dollars of sales tax receipts. And then tracking all the way across, we see the EDC is 1.1 million dollars again. Franchise fees are up considerably, almost 1.2 million dollars. And then everything else down the page stayed pretty consistent year over year. I will point out that unrestricted investment earnings, your interest income continues to, to rise. Rates are finally starting to come back up. So that number's being generated from. Starting on page 21 is the fund level presentation, I'm not gonna spend a whole lot of time on this. Yeah, I'm not gonna spend a whole lot of time on this. That runs through, runs us through page 25. You'll see the general fund and then the combined non-major funds. There's no real new information here. You will see that there's no long-term assets or liabilities to really discuss. Pages 22 and 25 are the reconciliations between what we've already gone over and this fund level presentation. So going to page 26, this is the assets and deferred outflows of resources for your, your utility funds. I will point out that this year, because of the city submitting an annual comprehensive report to the GFOA, which I was gonna get into in just a more detail in just a minute, we are showing much more detail in the city's financial statements. So you will see all of the funds broken out. So you have your water and sewer, golf course, water and sewer capital projects fund. And if you'll go forward one more page for me, you'll see the golf course capital projects fund as well, coming into the total enterprise funds as a whole. Just pointing that out, that now you can put your eyes on every single fund of the city. We've already talked about a lot of those changes, though. Coming over to page 28, this is the income statement for your utility funds. You'll see right there in the middle of the page, the operating income or loss. The water and sewer fund had operating income of almost 2.5 million dollars. One more page, I think? There we are. Water and sewer had operating income of almost 2.5 million dollars. That does include the non-cash expenditure of depreciation expense driving that down. If we took that out of the equation, you would have had an income of 3.9 million dollars. The golf course, 337,000 dollar loss. If we take again the non-cash depreciation expense out of the equation, it's still 178,000 dollar loss. I will point out at the, about two-thirds of the way down the page there, the transfers line item. Those are a little bit higher than they've been in the past.
John, the 177,000?
Yes, sir.
On the golf course.
It's not on that page, the 337,580 is their operating loss for the year. And if we add the depreciation expense back to that, then it would only have been 178,000 dollar loss.
That was my question.
Yes, sir.
That one was another one that over time looked like to me expenses have risen some, but they've increased their income pretty substantially. So that gap is narrowed. I may not have time to look at all those over time, but you know.
I will point out, if you compare just year to year, the golf course looks like it, the revenues went down this year compared to last year. And that is because 109,000 of those fees were shifted over to the golf course capital projects fund to start funding it for future improvements. So.
That 109 right there, Gary.
So do, i- if you pull last year's report out and put them side by side, you are gonna see a decent dip there, but that's the reason why. As I was about to say, we'll point out the transfers about two-thirds of the way down the page there. Those are significantly higher over the previous year. And what's going on there is we have talked at length in previous years about the inter-fund receivables and payables, primarily that the golf course was hanging on to that they owed back to every other fund of the city. Joel did a significant, made a significant effort to get all of those receivables and payables kind of cleaned up and cleared out, so y'all can have a really good idea going forward of exactly where each one of your funds are sitting. He's consolidated all those inter-fund receivables and payables down to just the general fund and the water and sewer fund, the two funds that can most easily absorb them. That does make your water fund look a little odd this year. But it, it is what it is, and it'll, it'll, it'll kind of clean out, clean itself out. So I did wanna point that out, that, that you really did take what we've been saying in this room for the last several years to heart and try to clean some of that old stuff up. Page 29 is the statement of cash flows. There we go. As I tell you every year, I'll point out the cash flows you are provided by operating activities. As long as you're generating positive cash flows from operations, your fund's working perfectly. And you can see your utility fund generated 2.5 million dollars. And then you can track that down and see exactly where the funds, where the cash flow went from there. Good chunk of it was in the inter-fund transfers that I was just talking about. But then you can see the principal paid and interest paid on capital debt, those fees from the acquisition of debt, so on and so forth. And where all your cash went. I, I will continue to point out your deficit cash, cash used from operations on your golf course. I think I've, I, I'm fairly certain I've had this conversation with your mayor in the past, and he looks at me and says, but we have a golf course. That is your decision.
Yeah, I think if you do look over at the trends over time, the revenues, they, they've made some headways.
They, they have made some headways, you're right. And there, there's not a city that I work for that their golf course makes money. It really, as you've told me in the past, it really is a quality of life issue of something that you're providing to your citizens. So I'm pointing it out, and as long as y'all are aware of exactly what it is, then you're in a good position.
You know, I've pointed it out a lot of times on the other side, too, and, and I do feel like they've made some headway, too.
Over 30,000, over 30,000 rounds played there this year. It's the highest in the Amarillo Canyon area as far as 18 holes, the number of rounds played per hole. That 32 is, there's not another 18 hole that plays that many. If you combine, that's more than all that's played in the Comanche, the 32, they have 36 holes and we play more on our 18 than they played there. And I think we're close on the other course to playing more than 18 holes, so.
So, like I said, your, your citizens are using it, they seem to appreciate what you're providing to them. As long as you're aware of the financial impact of it, then good for you, you're in a good place. And as I also said, I don't do Amarillo's audit, so I don't know exactly what their position is. But the other cities that I look at that have a golf course, none, they're all in the same position that you're. So, and they, every mayor to a T says the exact same thing. It's a quality of life issue, and that's something, that is something to be considered and taken into account, that you are providing a significant benefit to your citizens, that they seem, from what you were just reading, to be taking advantage of and really enjoying. With that being said, page 31 starts the notes to the financials. I'm not going over these in details, I believe Commissioner Jones might shoot me if I did.
Not true.
Not true, okay. I will point out the ones that I've already kind of alluded to, that I think, like I said, were gonna be of the most interest to you. The first one being note number three, I'm gonna go to page 44. This is the discussion of your capital assets related just to the business type activities. You can see at the, in that increases column there, that is what the current year purchases were. Under the land, you have 4,178, that's the land that you purchased. The increase in your construction and process, that then several of the projects completed. That 2.16 million dollars in the transfers reclassifications column, that's the completion of water well number 38, which I believe is Spring Canyon. Then we've got the Hunsley Hill Road Drainage, Drain System, and the AMI AMR project also completed during the year. So you did have some significant projects that completed, and you can track those down. The major purchase outside of your CIP is the building of 856,000 dollars. That's the water department shop building that y'all bought. And that's where, where those costs are being recorded. Page 46, note number five. This is that discussion on the lease income that I was telling you about that we'd get to. So this is a new disclosure, it lets you know kind of by project, by and large, exactly what you are renting out and what the, the, the expected revenues on the various projects are. Just coming forward one more page, you can see the receivable broken out, much like we do for the debt. Where you began the year, any new additions or receipts that you, that you were, that you received coming into the ending balance, and then broken down by year for the next four years, exactly what the city is supposed to receive. Principal and interest again, assuming no changes. So you can see exactly what your expected cash inflows are going to be. Note number six at the bottom of that page is the beginning of the discussion on your long-term debt. But I'm gonna go to page 48 and the advanced refunding column, or paragraph, right there, perfect. These two paragraphs right there in the middle of the page are talking about the advanced refunding that you did. Really, that second paragraph where it starts the reacquisition price is where I wanna focus, because it does conclude by stating that the entire point of the advanced refunding was to reduce the city's total debt service payments over 10 years by 603,000 dollars. That is the savings, the cash savings that the city is going to recognize by doing the advanced refunding. So that is something worth pointing out to make sure that the commission is aware this number is there and exactly what it is. Moving over to page 49, this is again the, the chart on your long-term debt there. Come here, a little bit farther down, please. Perfect, thank you, ma'am. So you can see governmental activities and business type activities exactly where you began the year. You will see your surplus revenue obligation series 2012 bonds and the general obligation of refunding bond series 2013. Those are what got refunded, and those are removed from your, from your balance sheet. The cash outflows begin on page 51 and go through 52. So you can see by governmental activities, again, the governmental activities, business type activities, I'm gonna say those words a lot, exactly what the city has committed itself for as far as cash outflows, principal and interest for each one of its obligations over the next 10 to 14 years. The governmental activities, assuming no changes, will have all of its debt paid off in 14 years. Business type activities will have all of its debt paid off in 10 years. That's a, that's pretty consistent with where everyone else in the panhandle seems to be as far as debt, for the most part. There's some exceptions, some, some more, some less, but you're, you're pretty much in the ballpark as far as debt. Note number eight on page 54 starts the very lengthy discussion on your retirement plan that we've already pretty beaten to death. It is a very lengthy note, but one that I do highly recommend reading. It starts off talking about the TMRS plan for the city, and then it goes into the TESRS plan that you provide to your providers. Note number nine, starting on page 55, is the other post-employment benefit plans that you provide to your employees. Again, starting off on the, with the TMRS supplemental death benefits plan, and then moving into the TML health insurance plan. Great notes, I do highly recommend reading them. It'd be very, very lengthy to discuss it here tonight unless you just truly want to. Note number 10, starting on page 72, is the discussion on the EDC's commitments again. I pointed that out, since they are a component unit of the city, all of their financial information from the actual balance sheet income statement through the note disclosures are being reiterated in the city's financial report. So that's where those commitments are, so that your readers can see them as well. We've already talked about all of that, so, got me a little out of order, sir. Jumping ahead to page 86. I'm gonna guess in the page number three, but I'm, I'm decided not to.
Stop on 77 for a second.
Yes, sir, by all means. What can I do for you?
It's a good, good sheet, commission on a fun balance page, you get to see this quite often.
I did skip, skip over the budget, I apologize for that, sir. So the budgetary comparison schedule for the general fund is listed on page 77 there. So you can see exactly the original and final budget that you tasked Joe and Joel to maintain and to work within, and what the actual numbers ended up being, and how, how they did with that budget. Did you want me?
No, it's just a good overview.
Yeah, I think that's a good overview, and as we are digging into the budget.
It is just the general fund, I will point that out. There are some more budgetary comparison schedules that we're getting ready to talk about. So the general fund is here on page 77. Starting on page 86 is the combining statements on all of your non-major funds. That way, if the commission has any particular fund that you're most intrigued by or curious about, you can really dig in and see exactly where it is. This year, the city has decided to submit a comprehensive report to the Government Finance Officers Association, and with that comes requirements for additional schedules. So beginning on page 90, you will see there is a budgetary comparison schedule for each and every one of your funds, governmental funds, pardon me, that you set a budget for. So every fund that you could want to look at, you can see now how the budget, how, how they did compare to budget on each and every one of those funds. So that is new information for you, that is really worth digging into. When you get to your budgetary process, that's where you'll get a lot of good information from. Last but not least is, on page 97. This is again more new information that Joel compiled, and I, I've been singing his praises a lot this evening. This really warrants it. This is where, for the next, oh, three-ish pages, he had to go back through the city records and find financial and economic data for a 10-year trend on each and every one of these pages. That takes a significant amount of work to compile for the first time.
John, this is what I was really impressed with, and seeing this in here. And this was where I thought we'd spend a lot of that hour, but another day. But, you know, this is really good stuff to look at over time and in those trends. I was impressed to have this information.
All of this, all of these pages were compiled by Joel, and they are listed as unaudited information. So he would be the expert on all of that information. So that, that is, any questions you have on that, I would have to defer to him, but you are exactly right. This is fascinating information to read, and he really does need to be commended for the amount of work it took to compile it all, to dig it all out. That brings us, finally, the end of my ramblings to page 119 and pages 120. Should be the last two pages on the PDF, ma'am. This is our report on internal control and compliance with laws and regulations. You did not engage us to assess your internal control structure. However, we are required, as a matter of standard, that if we note any material weaknesses in internal control or significant, it matters of non-compliance with laws and regulations, that we bring those to the commission's attention. And I'm pleased to say that there were no such issues. You have the, the policies, the personnel, procedures that you have in place, you are running a very, very tight ship. That is not to say it's absolutely foolproof. You could throw your entire operating budget at it and not achieve perfect internal control. It's just a fact of the human nature. But we, we do feel with the way you're running things and the personnel that you have, should something material happen, we feel it would be caught fairly quickly. So. I just tried to hit the highlights, I didn't want to put anybody to sleep. Are there any questions or concerns that I can just free this evening?
Page 98.
Page 98.
Program revenues, mid-page, bottomed out. Public safety revenue, do you know what that is? 827,370.
Safety, you're talking about the change in 2015, 2016.
Yep, this third one down.
Before municipal court was included in public safety for fiscal year 16, it was broken out as its own department, so it began tracking it separately. That's why there's a change there. It wasn't tracked separately before.
These, these charges for services or these revenues?
These are, these are, uh, these are revenues.
Charges.
Charges for services is just the GFOA's terminology for fees.
He finds, fines, fees and costs, court costs.
Fines, fines and fees.
Normally, yes, sir. When you get a ticket.
Yeah, I can see, you can see the change in just here.
Yeah, yeah.
The net income? I'm, I'm gonna give you the actual net income, which includes all my accounting adjustments. The net income you can see on page 20, sir, and it was 2,226,184 dollars. That, that is not actual cash net income, but yeah.
We're confused on that a lot of times. It's not cash.
Yeah, it is, when you say change in net position or net income, that is an accounting term. That includes the non-cash change in accruals, non-cash change in receivables, things of that nature.
If we inherited a road for development, would that number be in that?
Yes, if you inherited a road for development, that would actually be listed as a capital contribution revenue. So that would increase that number. Obviously not a cash item. So that, that is, it's a little misleading. That's why I wanted to make sure to, in, in addition to giving you your net income number, tell you how your cash position actually changed. So you, you raised your cash position half a million dollars over the previous year.
You know, we'll look at budget, too. On page 103, there's a 10-year trend and just in taxes and all. You know, there's the big gap for the pool, but then. you know, there's the big gap for the pool, but then, I mean, you look at what that trend's been over time. You know, that, that's a pretty impressive number on the tax rate, so.
It, it definitely is.
You know, I mean, we're still servicing the same debt on the pool and we were at forty-six and a half cents and now we're down to forty-two point six cents.
Yes, sir. And this is a great schedule also to compare yourself to the other jurisdictions within your general facility. And truthfully, Mr. Mayor, that does, uh, raise another point that I kinda glossed over, but, um, related to your tax rate. It's a note back on page, uh, seventy-five. It's note number twelve at the bottom of that page. This is not a required disclosure. It's something that our firm puts in for the benefit of the commission. It talks about the constitutional limit that you could assess in property taxes compared to where you actually are. It's a very theoretical discussion because it doesn't take into account rollback collections or, um, the, the cap that the state says you can only increase by so much percentage per year. But what it tells the readers is that were you to max out your tax rate, which by the way, you've got a little over two dollars of wiggle room before you hit your constitutional max. The state says you can assess up to two dollars and fifty cents max and you're at forty-two point six eight cents. So you, you've got a significant amount of room to maneuver within your tax rate. But were you to max that out, you could generate an additional eighteen point seven million dollars worth of tax revenue. What that tells the readers is that you're providing the resources, the functions that you are on a very minimal tax rate. But additionally, that should something catastrophic befall the city, you've got ample room to maneuver within that to be able to handle crises, crises as they come up. And that's the entire point of having that note in there for you.
Page one oh-two is a great, uh, valuation table as well. And it's actually broke down into, uh, categories from residential, commercial and industry. And it also takes in the tax exempt stuff.
Yeah, so you can see exactly how your taxable valuation increased from.
Very interesting story.
Yeah. You, you haven't quite doubled your valuation, but you're almost there in ten years.
Commercial's pretty impressive.
Double the commercial.
Double, doubled in industry. Take one, one, one loan star to come in, double your industry.
Of course, it's really gonna be nice to have one, the milk plant comes back online. So that's the exempt to seventy-six thousand.
Yeah, the exempt is.
I, I do wanna temper your, your thought here just a little bit, Joe. Uh, this is not all growth. Some of this is the, uh, state coming in to Pratt and saying, you have to value these things at X dollars. Uh, so some of it, a tremendous amount of it is growth. A fair amount of it is also the state interfering with valuations. So that, that is something just to be aware of. Wonderful numbers, but it's, it's a little dimmer than what you were thinking, I think.
Interfere with valuations and restrict revenues. That's a pretty cool little trick.
You what now, kind of?
We're interfering with valuations, but restricting revenues, that's pretty cool.
We can just drive seven and a half hours and talk to them.
Oh, sure.
I believe I've tried that once.
It's just a drive down the street.
Yeah.
They're very open to that.
Joel, John, your team, thank you for the incredible work. I know it's not just you, Joel, in that department as well. But it's really great. So I know you and I have talked plus two, it's been three years now trying to bridge some of this and getting some of these, uh, GFOA stuff in there. So it's, it's very impressive. It tells a story.
Any other questions for John?
Any major changes coming down from Gatsby?
Uh, so the next new standard, the hit that's going to be, that's assumed to be a significant change, is very much related to that lease standard I was describing, but it's related to subscription-based information technology. Uh, so any long-term commitments you have for IT arrangements, uh, are gonna end up being shown presumably as a, a capital asset and corresponding long-term debt. So that, that's the biggest change that we're seeing right now. Who knows what's going to actually? They have basically up until June thirtieth, uh, to decide if they're gonna postpone statements or not or if they're gonna let everything flow the way that it's supposed to. So we'll, we'll know more about midsummer. But I think that, that subscription-based IT, um, standard is gonna be the really big one to hit. I'm praying they put a de minimis clause in it.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve. Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Motion second to approve the audit. Uh, all in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Opposed like sign, uh, the motion passes. Thank you, John.
Ladies and gentlemen, again, thank you for your time this evening. Before I finally sit down and stop talking, um, as I tell you every year, let me just reiterate. It's a true joy to get to come and work with Joel and all of your staff. You do have a tremendous group of people. But we're here for you year-round. If there's ever anything that we can do for you, please do not hesitate to give us a call. Uh, our philosophy is that phone calls are always free. We do not start our clocks ticking till we either have to go somewhere, prepare something. So please take advantage of that as often as you need to. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, John.
I'll just stand back here 'cause I think I'm effectively next again.
Before we go next time, thank you too, Joel. I mean, just tremendous work and just hearing everybody sing your praises, so thank you. All right, uh, item number nine, um, excuse me, uh, item number eight, uh, considering taking appropriate action on engagement of an auditor for City of Canyon's, uh, financial statement audit for fiscal year ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three.
We try to take care of this at the same time we present the audit, but we want to recommend to the commission that City of Canyon hire Dozer Pickens and Francis for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three audit of the financial statements. Dozer Pickens and Francis specializes in local government audits. John has mentioned they do majority of the cities and counties in Panhandle. So they're very familiar with issues that we deal with and, uh, pronouncements that, that affect us. Uh, so they are a good resource to call on throughout the year, but they, they do a great job on the audit. And so we're recommending that we engage them for next year's audit. Those followed by their engagement letter. Uh, they do quote a fee estimate in there of thirty-six thousand. That is one thousand dollars more than this year. If we start spending the ARPA money, uh, we will have to have a modified single audit. A lot less than a, than an all-out single audit if we were doing several major federal programs. And I'm assuming there'd be a little more cost.
Yeah.
In that case.
If, if I can just interject, if you can keep your expenditures under seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. It's a, it's a hope. Uh, if you can keep your expenditures of the ARPA funds under that threshold, then there wouldn't be any additional procedures or work. Once you cross that threshold is when we have to come in and do additional stuff.
That's not gonna work. Okay, I, I've got two grants also being funded.
Okay, now, one thing to bear in mind, I don't know how big your extra grants are.
Uh, three fifty and, uh, two fifty.
Okay, so they combined, they're still below seven fifty?
Okay.
The alternative procedures that Joel is referring to are if you were not already subject to single audit. So if you, if your other grants outside of ARPA exceed that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, then all bets are off and you have to have a full-blown single audit of all the funds.
But if you can't, if you combine them.
So no, ARPA is considered separately. Yeah. Uh, ARPA is considered separately until you cross the threshold on your other grant and then it's brought in.
All our breath.
Depends on how the bills swap.
So that is one thing to consider.
ARPA will exceed the seven fifty, so we will have a modified single audit.
Yeah, i- if, if your ARPA funds are the only thing that would kick you over, then it's called an alternative compliance procedure. And, uh, you'll have some additional reporting and we'd have to look at, uh, all of the ARPA expenditures for allowable costs and, um, allowed activities.
Just said why that will happen, City Commission.
Now, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Love to get this correct report. I want you back.
I'm, I'm here for questions, please.
Is, do any other cities rotate you in and out of, after two, three years and rotate you out of here and come back?
No, sir.
Yes, sir, no?
No, no, sir, they do not.
They do not.
Uh, we have several clients that have been clients of the firm since nineteen seventy-three.
In no visa.
So I recommend cities that I'm not currently working for to do that and rotate to me. And cities that I am currently working for to not do that. But that is of course up to the commission. Um, there, there is a school of thought that getting fresh sets of eyes on things is not a bad idea. There's an alternative to that though, that having experienced sets that know how your city works and what the ins and outs are is a more efficient use of your funds. It's, you get the same effect, but it's two ways of looking at it. So it's entirely a discussion for the commission.
I agree with you, I just wonder.
But no, I, I usually, and I hate to say this because the, the, the way they, I hope y'all are not experiencing this the way that I am, uh, maintaining staff is becoming more and more challenging. Uh, so some of our more problematic clients, where we're approaching some of the, uh, independence lines that the, uh, GEO puts on us, we're having, we are having to rotate them out just because I'm of manpower. Uh, y'all are such a clean and efficient audit that you are, we're, we're not in any danger of that here, but.
Oh, you, you probably know like a lot of times before, they made a rule change, it's like three or five years ago. They can't come in and do any work at all. They have to be like hands-off. And so that's why, you know, just where Joel was coming in to do some of that work. And then they were coming in afterward. A lot of these one, three-man, five-man shops have, just, just can't do that.
Yeah, and we, we.
That's what you're talking about.
Yeah, we, we, we butt up against the line as close as we can, uh, but it's becoming harder and harder.
Yeah, they've come, come down quite a bit on, on that.
Yeah, uh, we've actually taken several, all of our smaller cities off of what, it's called the yellow book. It's the governmental auditing standards. We've taken them down off of that, uh, because the independence guidelines for just a regular financial statement audit are a little looser. Uh, so we can continue to help them out, but it, it's getting to be kind of a scary future out there. Uh, what they're talking about next, and they've been talking about it for about ten years now, maybe a little bit longer, is that they really do not like us preparing the financial statements for you. They want Joel to write this entire book and then we just come in and put our letter in it. Yeah, you, you, as I was saying earlier, y'all are in.
Not everybody has that luxury.
Exactly.
A bunch, most, I'd say ninety percent of our peer governments can't do it.
Easily.
Mr. Mayor, I move, we engage Dozer Pickens and Francis to perform audit of City of Canyon's financial statements as of and for the year ended September thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three. Have my motion.
Apologize for interrupting.
Nope, I understand exactly why you did it.
Is there any further discussion?
Second to me.
All in favor of the motion signify by raising your right hand? Opposed like sign, motion passes, so.
Ladies and gentlemen, I hope your meeting goes much more smooth, uh, smoothly and faster now that I'm gone. Y'all have a wonderful evening.
Thanks, John. All right, item number nine, uh, considering taking appropriate action on second and final reading, resolution number oh-eight dash twenty-twenty-three, resolution of the City Commission at City of Canyon approving the project funding agreement between Canyon Fiscal Therapy and Canyon Economic Development Corporation relating to direct financial assistance and job creation. Stephanie?
Yeah, so on our meeting on January twelfth, um, we had a meeting for some direct funds and job creation for our friends at Canyon Fiscal Therapy for twenty thousand. Uh, so this, I guess the funds will be dispersed by C E D C. It is our recommendation, um, that y'all approve this motion. Um, the public hearing was held on February ninth with no opposition. Do you have any questions?
Let me adopt resolution number oh-eight dash twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
Have a motion second to adopt resolution number oh-eight dash twenty-twenty-three. Uh, is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by raising your right hand? Opposed like sign, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator.
Do our audit next year.
All right, item number ten, uh, considering taking appropriate action on utility rates study report, uh, presentation, uh, forward decision.
Okay, so now it's the third meeting that we've talked about this. If you recall, last meeting, we were about to have our public forum. Uh, we told you about that. We had that public forum. Uh, we had, oh, fifteen, fifteen or so participants come. Twenty. We had comments though, and so those comments are included in your packet. Uh, every, just about every person that came left a comment. We had some other comments that came by email, uh, that were sent to Megan. Uh, Megan discussed those with, with me and with Lee. We responded with feedback to the, to the customer, if it was an issue that required feedback. So you've got those emails as well. That's exhibit one to, to my memo. Um, what we've done is we, we took the model that New Gen presented in their report on January ninth. They shared with us the Excel schedules, so we were able to do this pretty easily. Uh, we went in and modified that for the, the things that you mentioned to us at that first meeting back in January. Uh, we took the ten percent recommended increase in the volumetric rate for tiers four through six. They had all of that in year three of the five-year, uh, model. We spread that out over the five years. So it's basically a two percent increase on those higher volumes over that five-year period. So we built that in over five years instead of just cramming it all into one year. Um, also, we, we made a change to the education rate. New Gen didn't change the, the education rate at all. And so we worked in a ten percent increase over five years. So again, that's in effect a two percent increase. And then also recall that another impact on them from the original study was that there's a, a basic, a change in the basic rate based on the meter size. So of our largest meters, uh, all of those are, are at WT, the six-inch meters. Um, and, uh, City, City of Canyon has, I'm sorry, C S D has, uh, four-inch primarily, uh, four and smaller. Uh, so those, those larger meters have an impact on them as well. So we put all those changes in, we recalculated scenario two, is, is, that was a scenario that, that New Gen presented. Um, that's exhibit two is where we modified that. And so you can see there how that changed the numbers. If you, if you took that first report and compared it to this one, uh, these numbers are, are, are a little higher because we're incorporating, uh, increase over the five years plus the education rate, what they, which they did not. So you see there in the bottom of page three of three of that exhibit, that's the cumulative increase or change over that five-year period. So the first year, if we implemented this October one of twenty-three, twenty-four, we would have, uh, seven hundred ninety-five thousand over the revenue requirement. And that was building in all of the factors that they put in, all of our costs for providing the service. Uh, also inflation, uh, the, the projects that we told them about, uh, that's what these numbers are being compared to. So it's a cumulative increase over that five years of a little over a million dollars, million eighty-seven. And again, when you get out to year four, year five, all of that's contingent upon timing. When we do those projects, when we incur that debt, when the first debt service payments are due. Uh, this is assuming that, uh, we would, we would start paying a new debt, issue of debt in fiscal year twenty-seven. So that's why it drops significantly there in year four. It starts to recover again in year five. The change on the, the rates that were tied to the size of the meter, that's a ten-year implementation. That's the way New Gen, uh, did that. So they're increasing that base rate. It's the minimum rate that those customers pay. That's factored in over ten years. Uh, and they're again implementing the American Water, uh, Association rates. That's what that's based on. It's not just a random number they're. It's not just a random number they're grasping, grasping out of the air.
A W W A.
Has to do with the, the cost of supplying the capacity of water to that meter. So we implemented.
Joel, is this on exhibit two?
Exhibit two, it's a three-page exhibit, that's the full thing, so that, that has water, it has wastewater, it has the, I'm sorry, just water and wastewater, trash isn't on this.
So, couple of things, just observation, one, uh, so education, we're increasing it basically ten percent over eight years because we have to increase for three, so.
The meter, the meter size piece of this, two pieces. Meter size is over ten years. The ten percent that you asked us to do on the, on the volume, uh, that's done over five years. And I prepared, I prepared an education specifically, what, what it would do to these education accounts. Uh, that's exhibit three, I'm sorry, exhibit four. You're not gonna be able to see it up there, it's too small. Uh, okay, so that's W T, right there, if you can zoom in on that side. Scroll down to the bottom of that, Megan. Okay, right there. So over that five-year period, you can see it's gonna be about a thirty-three to thirty-four thousand increase to W T. And this is based on the volume of water that they used last fiscal year, which is probably pretty representative. We had a fairly dry year last year. So pretty, and, and they're pretty consistent on their usage throughout the summer anyway. So it's, it's generally a thirty-three to thirty-four thousand increase to W T each year for accumulate to a hundred and sixty-nine, almost a hundred and sixty-nine thousand over the five years. C I S D, scroll down a little bit, it may be the next page, Megan.
It's above it.
Oh, don't go too far, okay, that's the effect on C I S D.
Have they, have either places, have they weighed in on this at all, or have I had communication with them about this?
No, I'm preparing this to present to you all first. We, we can make conversation with them, we can communicate to them what this, this will do. Uh, we definitely, if, if, uh, the sooner this is passed, the better, so that they can incorporate this into their budget.
Didn't wanna have premature conversations until we had an understanding. Was there, did I miss the implementation here, Joel? That hasn't been said.
I'm, I'm proposing that we begin this at October one of twenty-three, which would be next fiscal year.
You know, another piece that I'm not suggesting we do different, but we've got the higher rate tiers with higher charges to incent, uh, water conservation, we don't have that piece on the education piece.
We did a flat. They have one rate, they don't have a tier rate structure.
Right, that's, that's what I'm saying, theirs is not.
That's, that's right. You gotta remember, some of them have irrigation wells, too.
And I'm, like I say, I'm not, I'm just stating that as an observation.
School does have some irrigation well, how they use.
Another observation in there, too, uh, for the residential, back on, uh, uh, that second, uh, chart. I'm calculating eighty-one percent of water, so falls in under, uh, the twenty thousand gallons, so. What page you on? That one right there with schedule two. So Cody, I'm just taking that, those numbers right there, that residential, uh, on the, the right-hand column, total in those top three and dividing it by the five fifty-six, and I'm coming up with eighty-one percent. So you really got the vast majority of folks, you know, concerned about, you know, their water rates going up. Most of it's not, it, it's just the ones that are really the heavier landscape users that are, that are gonna go.
The users that had a, say, a five-eighths or three-quarter inch meter before and get moved to a, a one-inch meter, they're gonna see a slight increase because there is a meter change there. Uh, but the volumetric charge, that change isn't going to affect anyone until they use over twenty thousand gallons. So I did mine, I live on a corner lot, I have twenty-two thousand square yards, uh, square feet of grass to try to keep green in the summer. Um, this, this is, this is what I do. Um, you can shoot me if you want, so.
I was gonna say, you, you measured the square footage of your grass area.
I gotta figure out how to fertilize it.
I love it, I love it.
Here we go, so in the, let's say from May, April to May, so I'm probably pretty representative of a high water usage, the, the one that's getting increased at twenty thousand. So through the winter, I'm using ten, anywhere from ten to twenty thousand gallons of water a month. That goes to thirty-three in May. Forty-five, forty-six is my peak in the driest months. And I'm, I'm careful, if it rains, I shut it off, so it, it drops like, here, here in one month, it dropped from forty-six to forty-four and down to thirty-eight. If it, if it rained, I shut it off. So for me, this is what mine looked like, I didn't get this done in time to put up here. Just on the, the change in the meter, uh, my base rate goes up thirty-two dollars a month. Uh, and, well, I'm sorry, this is, this is actually both, because I already had a one-inch meter, so that didn't affect me. So generally, my, because of the volumetric rate, mine's going up about thirty-two to thirty-three dollars annually for my total cost. And, uh, that, over five years, that's a hundred and sixty-two dollars. That's based on my usage with, with the ten percent factored in over.
That doesn't sound like a lot.
It's not huge.
Three dollars, three dollars.
It's not as much as I thought. And again, I could, I could spend ten thousand and zero gate, zero escape my yard, but it's gonna be a long time before that's cost, cost effective.
Unless we incentivized it. You know, we could continue to incentivize it more than that, too, and, you know, that is a thought over time that, uh, you know, we did have, we had comments on both sides, but we certainly had some folks that said, we've gotta conserve our water and, and, yeah, I think that's the driver there, and, and, like I say, most people are not gonna see that, but those that are really watering a lot for their yards will, so. Put it off that, uh, that I, and I got it on my phone.
Joel, yours was only three dollars a month, though.
I, I had a, uh, chart, uh, we pulled up Water Smart, which really does work good for the, the city. And go in and you can look and see how much you watered the day before, and, and so, um, last month, and we tried to conserve, too, we, we actually hit where we hit eight thousand gallons, for us, that's a big deal, because I guess we had it pretty much shut off, so, uh, that's without any irrigation. Yeah, I wish we had this chart because it really stands out on Water Smart. Because I've watered twice in the last ten days. And so we used eight thousand gallons all of last month. Uh, each of those days, we used four thousand gallons a day. So it really is, uh, those numbers and get to the big numbers, it's all about watering your yard and, and that's the conservation piece, it's, it's, uh, and, and I think that's a message, Megan, that we get out to folks, too. That it really is, I don't mind putting my Water Smart out there, you know, on, on our website, but it, it is all about watering your yard. And, but you still have room, eight thousand gallons, I've got room to water my yard some, too, before I hit the twenty thousand. So I think that's the message, we're not shutting off that.
Water usage. You what?
I did also, prepared, the exhibit three was, uh, two, two different commercial accounts. I won't name those, but one represents a larger commercial account. Uh, this one actually has three separate meters. And their usage, uh, they do have some landscaping, so that their usage would involve some sprinkler system. But they were pretty consistent throughout the year in their usage. Their increase, they're looking at seven hundred and fifty, if we implemented all these changes, it'd be about seven hundred and fifty a year. So about thirty-eight hundred over the five years, that's a larger business. A small business, one meter, one-inch meter, uh, based on their usage from last year, they would see about a twenty-two dollar a year increase. About a hundred and ten over the five years, so not, not too significant. Of course, there's a number, I think we had, we got two hundred and twenty-two, maybe two hundred and twenty-five, I'm not sure, uh, commercial accounts, and they're, they're very diverse, some are, some are larger, some are smaller. Of course, Eleven Star is gonna be the largest meter, so they'd have a larger impact. This wasn't the largest.
Joel and I were visiting earlier, too, two possible scenarios that this rate's not gonna be enough, uh, is if we go and have some infrastructure that we go out and build and have our citizens pay for. Uh, if we go out east or so and, and we build some infrastructure. Or really, our, our way to pay for that is, is probably through this, uh, if it's related to water. Uh, the other piece is, too, we've had some folks come to us and talk about long-term water rights. It, it's current citizens paying for the future, and, and if we go down that road, it's gonna cost us more in water rates uh, for all current residents, and that's, that's kind of a hard decision, but that is a decision if we decide to.
As far as increasing based on, on something, I feel like this, uh, this study is a, is a comprehensive study. It's a good source to use as a guidance for making these increases, it's not just a, a gut feeling. There's a lot that went into preparing this and a lot of planning, uh, so it's not just, uh, sticking our finger in the air, it's, it's actually based on some good information. So I'll put that out there as well. Staff is recommending that this rate study and, and the scenario two specifically modified with the two changes that I've discussed, the ten percent volumetric rate spread out over five years and the education rate uh, increased over five years. Staff is recommending that this be adopted and that be effective October one twenty, twenty-three, so it'd be the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year.
Anybody have any other questions for staff or Joel?
Always looking for something to go down, I was sure hoping to see something go down.
A lot of it didn't go up. Something to be said during a, a significant inflationary period.
Any other questions for Joel? I will make the motion that, uh, we approve the rate study as presented. I have a motion, a second, if there is any further discussion. Uh, if not, all in favor, uh, the rate study is presented, uh, signified by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Alright, item number eleven, uh, appropriate action on resolution number eleven dash twenty twenty-three, resolution of the City Commission of the City of Canyon, Texas, canceling the May sixth, two thousand twenty-three general election of the City of Canyon, Texas, as permitted under sectioning two dot oh fifty-one, Texas Election Code.
Yep, yep, so, uh, the time has come to certify, uh, canceling the election, and Gretchen does a great job of highlighting what, what the specific law is, so at this point, we have a certification of unopposed candidates, and so this will be officially presented, uh, to the commission tonight. You can see the Secretary of State's form right there. We have two, two members rotating off and two members rotating on. And, uh, these become effective, uh, uh, after the election, the election will be held on May sixth. So what this does is allows us to cancel our city election.
Show moved, second. Have a motion, a second, uh, to, uh, cancel the election, all in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, like sign. Motion passes. I appreciate your orders. Look forward to, uh, to new commissioners who are, uh, to be with us that are out here tonight, so, Robin Kramer and Danny Potter. Okay, um, uh, item number twelve, uh, consider and take appropriate action on ordinance number eleven seventy, and ordinance of the City of Canyon, Texas, adopting and enacting new code of ordinances, providing for the repeal of certain ordinances not clear within, providing a penalty for violation thereof, not exceeding five hundred dollars generally, or not exceeding two thousand for violations related to fire safety, zoning, or public health, and sanitation, or not exceeding four thousand dollars for violations relating to dumping of refuse, providing for amendment of such code, and providing when such code, and this ordinance shall become effective.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, Gretchen has been working over the last couple of years to recodify all of our existing, uh, codes. Most of the incremental changes that are being made are format and font. Uh, the other ones that are being made are in regards to state preemption of any sort or kind, and so any conflicts in state law, uh, those have been removed, so. The state came in and said we couldn't do something, those were removed, or if they were in direct conflict in our ordinances with state laws, those were removed. Uh, mo, the majority of this work was done by our, our current codification company, Franklin Legal Services, they're actually out of Lubbock. Uh, Kirk Franklin's the, uh, the leader over there. Not a whole lot here, there's nothing in there that we interjected, you don't know about it, it's just a, it's just a cleanup effort, so. No, it's not, if you didn't read the whole thing, it's not a huge deal, it's, it's mostly for aesthetic cleanup and state law conflicts, so. We didn't add anything on subdivision regulations in the recodification, to be clear, but, sorry. Is it too soon? No, no humor. Guys are a tough crowd, so mostly it's just cleanup. Work, Gretchen and, and, uh, props go out to Danny Cornelius, put a lot of time and effort over the last two years to get this done, and, and they deserve all the credit for the amount of work that they put into this, so.
I'll make it, mostly approved. In a second, uh, to approve, uh, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, like sign.
Charter had nothing to do in any of this, so there's no.
That was pretty quick for six hundred and something, like, good grief.
Efficient and effective government. Nice work.
Alright, uh, item number fourteen, uh, consider and take appropriate action on resolution number ten dash twenty twenty-three, resolution by the city.
Skip one, skip one.
Item thirteen.
Thirteen, sir, skip thirteen.
I know you don't wanna see what you did, but.
You're skipping, skipping, Luke. You're skipping, skipping Lucas. It's the first of many trips for Lucas. One time no C's.
Okay, item number thirteen. Induct a public hearing and consider and take appropriate action on ordinance number eleven seventy-one. An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Canyon, Texas, rezoning the property at seventeen nineteen Second Avenue, otherwise described as lot oh one-two, block sixteen, original town of Canyon, Randall County, Texas, providing that the zoning classification be posted upon the zoning district maps of the City of Canyon, providing that all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are expressly repealed, and providing for an effective date. Zoning request is from SF dash S, uh, single-family suburban residential district to MF, multifamily attached residential district. Lucas?
All right, well, it's great when the, uh, ordinance is actually longer than the memo, but, uh, yeah, this is, uh, another property that, I, I think it was my first commission meeting. Uh, we had a, a similar rezoning application, and I kind of gave the commission a heads-up that I think we're going to be seeing more of this in this area. It's a neighborhood, uh, to our immediate east of City Hall downtown. Uh, there's a lot of, uh, older homes or vacant properties there, uh, that are being bought and, and redeveloped, uh, which, in my opinion, is awesome for the city because we're seeing some infill development, uh, which is a sign of, of a healthy community. So, uh, I'm excited to see some of that happen. This is actually a vacant lot, uh, there's nothing there now. And as the, uh, application shows, it's a request to, uh, change that zoning from single-family to multifamily. Uh, it does back up to multifamily, uh, and this body did approve a similar rezoning to lots, uh, to the west. I believe it was last year, maybe the year before. And so that is the request here. The Planning and Zoning Commission did approve, uh, unanimously in favor of the rezone. Uh, I believe we received two letters back, and they're both in favor.
All right, um, this does require a public hearing, um, and has anyone signed in yet?
I do not have anyone signed in.
So we'll open the public hearing, and since no one has signed in, we'll close the public hearing. Uh, is there any further discussion or questions for Lucas?
If there aren't, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance number eleven seventy-one.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, uh, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, like sign.
Thank you.
All right, we'll try this one again. So, uh, item number fourteen, consider and take appropriate action on resolution number ten dash twenty-twenty-three. Resolution by the City of Canyon, Texas, denying Southwest Public Service Company's proposed rate increase in connection with its statement of intent submitted on about February eighth, two thousand twenty-three, authorizing the city's continued participation with other cities in the alliance of Excel municipalities and participation in related rate proceedings, authorizing the hiring of attorneys and consultants requiring reimbursement of reasonable legal and consultant expenses, finding that the meeting complies with the Open Meetings Act, making other findings and provisions related to the subject. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is a rate case by SPS, which is Excel, and they are asking for the following. An increase in base revenues by approximately a hundred and forty-eight point five million, which is a twenty percent, a twenty point six percent compared to their current base. The rate case also, or the, the rate increase also includes fuel factor and energy efficiency cost recovery and some other associated charges. Uh, there is a very detailed chart on the second page of your memo that goes into detail. Uh, as a, as a recall to law, uh, the City of Canyon and other cities, uh, have original jurisdiction on rate setting in our community, and this is us extending that. And so this does, if it is denied and taken, it has to go before the Public Utility Commission of Texas, the PUC. We do, uh, team up with other Excel cities, so there's a bunch of us on there. Uh, we do this together, uh, and we have an attorney, uh, Freddie Herrera represents us in this case, and he, he handles this on, on the behalf of the A- Axiom Cities Alliance of Excel Municipalities. But all the details there are, are, are keyed out into those charged to see. At this point, we want to go ahead and move forward at the recommendation of, of our counsel to deny the rate increase.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion we adopt resolution ten twenty-three as presented, second.
I have a motion, a second, uh, all in favor of the motion, signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, like sign, uh, the motion passes.
Okay, that takes us now to item number sixteen. Consider and take appropriate action on authorization of the city manager to enter into a contract with Freezing Nichols for the completion of a capital recovery fee study. John?
Yes, back on, uh, August the fifteenth, uh, twenty twenty-two, uh, here, we came before you and discussed the, the need to move forward and complete this study. Uh, we had a three to two vote, authorized the city manager Joe Price to move forward with an RFQ for that process. Uh, we did, we sent that out to, there's seven or eight, I'm trying to look at my notes here. Firms, uh, from across the state that did, that do these types of studies. Two large, two or three large ones, and then two or three out of the metroplex that I could find. I personally was the one looking for those and found seven or eight. We had one response, uh, that was from Freezing Nichols. Their, their, uh, response is in that link. If you, if you choose to look at that, or if you haven't already looked at that, that's there. Uh, this is a project that we have talked about, uh, multiple times. Uh, in the twenty eighteen comprehensive plan, that's the first time that, um, it was discussed with this commission as far as, uh, looking back at, at, uh, records and looking. We've discussed it before, but the first time it was in a, in a plan. And that comprehensive plan in chapter five, recommendation number three, on page one twenty, it recommends that we, uh, carry out a, carry out a, a development, uh, study such as this. And then in twenty twenty-two, uh, the City of Canyon Strategic Plan, strategic goal number one, item number thirteen, of a plan also adopted by this commission, uh, suggested that we move forward with this process. Before we move to this process, in July of twenty twenty-two, we had a presentat- uh, you, we requested to forward to move forward with a development funding report. That report was printed, but was presented by Freezing Nichols on August the fifteenth of twenty twenty-two. The presentation of the, uh, that report led to the three to two vote, which I mentioned before, which, uh, authorized Joe to move forward with an RFQ. So I've come forward tonight with the, uh, staff recommends moving forward with this capital recovery fee study. This study will take over twelve months to be completed and will provide the commission and staff with a clear picture related to the actual costs associated with the development that is in, that is incurred by the city. We have had multiple meetings with stakeholders, staff, and commission related to the various methods to see costs associated with the growth of Canyon, and this, and this study will answer many of the questions that continually are asked, including how do we move forward? Uh, this study will, is, the majority of this study is outlined very, uh, specifically, correct, Joe?
Correct.
By what's, what is the?
State law allows.
I- i- the state law tells us exactly how this study has to, has to go, exactly what we have to look at, exactly what they have to look at, exactly what everything has to be based on. Twelve to thirteen months, they'll come forward with us with some recommendation. I- if you've looked at that, uh, response and also at the contract, there are other things that they're going to do for us, not, not necessarily associated with that study. One of those things is a, uh, park dedication, uh, fee, or for park dedication ordinance. It's included there, and there's several items included in there. I could go on about the parkland dedication ordinance if y'all'd like me to. Okay, thank you. They've heard that before. But there are several different items that will be covered in this, including the development fee issue. It is a, it is a lengthy study. When the study comes back, there will be recommendations to you from Freezing Nichols and from our staff, and then you will have complete, complete control over how you, as you do in every other study, on how you react to those recommendations. Such as the study that Joel provided. Joel stated that none of that was just, uh, sticking a finger up in the wind and making a guess and, and, and trying to decide something. None of this will be based on that. This is, this is specifically outlined in state law on how this study has to be done. And so we would, we would recommend that we move forward with this. Whether it is something that you all will decide to implement immediately or something in the future, we believe that it will help us answer many questions for the City of Canyon of, of what is the actual cost of development to the City of Canyon? And how can the City of Canyon, uh, pay our fair share? And how can developers pay their fair share on those items?
You didn't really allude to this in your packet. Do you have any limiting factors on why we only got one response on RFQ?
No, I don't. Uh, I sent that to Kimberly Horn also, which would be Freezing Nichols' arch enemy. Another large, large, uh, company.
Competitor.
Engineering firm. We didn't get a response from them. The other firms were out of the metroplex. I mean, I sent them specifically to them, I emailed them to all those firms in an attempt to do that. I would say, as I looked at studies, it appears from my research, anecdotally, the majority of the studies in the state are carried out by Freezing Nichols and/or Kimberly Horn. But it appears that Freezing Nichols does the majority of this. As I went to cities, and, and the cities I'm going to have to go to and look at for that are the inter- are Interstate thirty-five corridor, because those are the larger cities. You have to find cities that are, uh, growing and developing. And, um, so that's going to be the metroplex, that's going to be the Houston area and those type of locations. And as I look in those locations, those are the firms that are, those are the firms that are doing it. There is, the, an advantage to Freezing Nichols is, once again, they know our system. They know, they've, they've looked at our, they've looked at our system. That, that is a advantage. They, they've worked with our engineer before, uh, who again will be having to provide, uh, our engineer will have to be providing this group with, with additional information. So I, I have an answer for that, Cody.
I move that we authorize city manager Joe Price to sign the contract with Freezing Nichols.
Second. I have a motion, a second, um, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, like sign. Motion passes.
Thank you. Move forward with that.
All right, okay, we are getting there. Item number seventeen, consider meeting dates for the month of May, uh, two thousand twenty-three.
Gretchen proposed this, uh, be looking at the first, uh, excuse me, I lose my voice. The first, uh, uh, Monday, and then moving our second meeting to Thursday, May eight. About eighteen. And I think that's been confirmed with our incoming. Right, and the reason we're doing this, commission, is to align up with certifications of the newly elected officers. Align with the election law. I believe the swear-in's the eighteenth, so.
As long as it's after the seventeenth.
Had to be after the seventeenth, so we could meet on the fifteenth and have the new, the new commission, so.
Those days work for me.
First, first, that's, I'm good with the pairs.
Should we ask anybody in the gallery for the fixing?
I think we reached out to them, but, um, you could, we could.
No, I'm sure they did. I trust Gretchen.
Gretchen's already talked to them. Eighteenth would be a swear-in date, Danny and Robin. That would be your first meeting, which would be Thursday.
All right, sounds like those days work. Deal, um, item number eighteen, executive session pursuant to five fifty-one dot oh seventy-one. Consultation with attorney, five fifty-one dot oh eighty-seven, economic development, and five fifty-one dot oh seventy-four, board appointments, Canyon Main Street Advisory Board, construction advisory and appeals. And with that.
Seven forty-five.
Seven forty.
Seven forty-five.
Seven forty-five, seven forty-five, and we will turn into execs.
You have your notes to bring in there, I don't bring them out.
I don't bring them out. I guess. I can advise you against it.
Well. Sure. It's coming. It's more urgent.[358.13]
Your pleasure.
All right, I have 8:38 and at this time we will reconvene out of exec session. It's in your business to take care of it.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion we add Edward Flores to the construction advisory and appeals board.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, like sign, motion pass.
I'd like to make a motion.
It's unanimous.
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Claudia Burkett on the Canyon Main Street Advisory Board to replace me, Kelsey Ward.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, like sign, passes five zero.
I reluctantly move.
Reluctantly adjourned.
All right, thank you.
God bless.